Good evening. All right, good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, February twenty seventh at six P. M. We'll have district calls meeting to order. We'll do a roll call starting.
Hey, Mark Moore, if you're by, good to sit by.
There. Uh, Dr. Passover, now speaking with Carter Hoover, District One.
Charlie Simpson, Director of District Three. New student representative.
Welcome to all of our guests, joining us both in person and online. Just really appreciate you dedicating your time as the District, very glad that you're here. So just to kind of center us this evening, we're gonna read a public message, which is, we'll do kind of get agreements that to just realize that the agreement is more set, so we've got some, just relooking at this to do, if this is still, feels real true to us, but our agreements are to stay engaged, to experience discomfort, and be vulnerable, speak your truth, and expect and accept new and mature. And we'll start us entering us just in place and space today and honoring the people that have been here forever. So we have a little school district acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn, and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, Duwamish and Muckleshoot people, custom present. And honor gratitude to the land itself and the Duwamish and Muckleshoot tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility to the stewardship of this land, and we strive to work alongside the Duwamish and Muckleshoot people who have been living and working here since time immemorial. We further acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. We remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. We also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor survivors over centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building and working version of the United States. As a school district leadership, we pledge to recognize and work against systems that have historically and currently enforced and created inequities among the people that we serve. Now, by those who are, uh, would like to stand and will smooth the flag, whether that is received, I'm not sure. Picture one in your head as well. Give your nomination.
Say something there. You have to follow the portion stands, one nation, other, individual, liberty, justice for all.
Let's move to the food, uh, to next agenda.
Um, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I am so thrilled to be here at Thorndike for our meeting this evening, so, um, love to, assuming students.
Good evening, everyone. So I put together a short presentation for tonight's board meeting. I wanted to start off on something that was pretty light. We celebrated the grand opening of our new playground that was built uh, with capital levy funds. And so, um, uh, we took when we built that, we, you know, took a lot of things into account in terms of making sure that it was accessible for our uh, students who, uh, with exceptional needs, as well as making sure that, uh, we took into account like gross motor development and coordination and those sorts of things. So, um, we had a grand opening ceremony where students participated and was well received, so.
So we got, ended, there's a state law that says we have to go through thirty minutes of recess. Uh, are we there yet, or is that for next year?
I believe it's for next year.
Okay, so we'll get more time on.
They say, and they love it. I have a very good chance to go out there, take a look at it. It's pretty, it's, it's, it's huge. And then our next slide is on the Deveraux Student Strengths Assessment, also known as the DESA Screener, which identifies students in need of social emotional interventions. This is our second year, um, um, using it. Last year was a pilot, so we went ahead and, um, uh, have that available this year. And so it's, uh, um, used to grow across K five. And what we use from the information that we get is targeted interventions for students. And it helps us put together, uh, small groups as well, uh, to work with students, um, that have been identified. So the numbers up there, so in kindergarten, there were eleven students. And then the, the number, the first number is the total number of students. So two students were referred, uh, by staff members that didn't necessarily screen in, but felt that students could benefit from, from having those targeted supports. And the same for each, uh, for the following grades first through fifth grade.
Yeah, yeah, here's a little idea of what, um, you know. What, uh, what qualifies for students in the.
So students that are exhibiting, um, like, uh, in terms of like, if we look at ACES, uh, students that have had trauma, uh, students that are exhibiting, um, struggling with peer social interaction, uh, students that, um, that and have issues with regulating with some of their behaviors. Uh, so what we do, this helps identify that process. And based on those questions, it's a, it's a sixty second, um, screener, and it screens within ninety-five percent accuracy for, for students that we identify.
And where's, what's an example of that intervention?
Uh, so our school, uh, social worker and social emotional interventionist, uh, set up, uh, either one-on-one groups or a one-on-one support or small group instruction, talking about like, so friendships groups, like, how do we, how do we interact with each other? Um, when we want to take turns, or, um, how do we conflict resolve, you know, like conflict resolution? Um, and, um, what it means to help somebody. And we focus on, um, stuff like having empathy for others.
But so what's happening in small group training classroom?
Yes, we question, we actually deliver that, you know. Yeah, sometimes we push into classrooms and, uh, sometimes we do small group and, uh, supports and with the school social worker and Ms. Goodman and Ms. Nevins in their office classroom. And then the next slide is our CSET goals that were created, um, uh, last year when we were going through the comprehensive needs assessment. The goals recently were reviewed as part of our mid-year review with O S P I. Um, and so, uh, with that being said, we, you know, we looked at M T S S structures using related data to inform next steps. Um, data sources include, included mapping out math and reading schoolwide interventions. We, uh, recently completed a tiered fidelity inquiry, um, I read math and reading and DESA S E L screener, which I just mentioned, uh, Swiss data, um, and currently the district is going through an audit with I E P compliance. The goals were recently updated to include, just with students with I E Ps. Uh, one of the other conversations we've had is next year, our goals, because they're based off of S B A data. Next year, the goals, when we go through our, um, um, when we revamp or go through to, um, our goals will be focused on, um, I read data. So currently they're, um, they're centered around S B A data, so.
So I read both day or I read proficiency data?
Uh, person, both, but we'll look at both data sets and then.
Here's about this, this, um, I learned at the first, uh, half of, I'm trying to gather a close gap between the state average of forty-four point two.
So we looked at the averages between the, uh, the identified groups and then of those categories to the state average.
For what grade?
So for, for math, for proficiency and math.
For grades?
Uh, all, all grades.
So all grades? Okay, even though.
Yeah.
Thorndike is K five.
Oh, well, okay, an elementary grade. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, grades three, four, and five.
Okay, so you're saying that forty-four point two was, uh, the.
The average for the subgroup. Yeah.
I E Ps and M O Ls.
Well, the I E Ps were just at the, students with I E Ps were, I, I, students on I E Ps were just added onto that.
Okay.
But that subgroup is not, in terms of students with I E P, we're not included with that, with that percentage.
So, so the twenty-two percent, you're trying to get all of those groups up to at least.
At least twenty-two percent, which is half, is half of the state average and grades three, four, and five.
Okay, so I was, I was looking at the breakdown, just of, yeah, Thorndike, so last year in math, last year was nine point four percent at Thorndike. So that's a pretty, that's a fairly aggressive goal to have twenty-two percent.
Yeah, again, you know, in terms of, uh, aiming high and, you know, uh, we had to come up with something that was, you know, obviously it's, it's high and we wanted to aim high, but, you know.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to make sure I was understanding what this comes to, okay.
And then we'll be, um, we'll be going through that process to look at next year's, um, CSET goals. Um, and I'm working with an O S S I coach, uh, so we'll be starting that work, uh, in April, that process for the revisions for next year. Okay, and then on the next slide, um, just to, you know, identify some challenges and ways, uh, to mitigate, uh, some of the risk and, uh, related data data used, and so I won't go through all of that, but there's some data points on there. Um, and and those were, um, things that were identified through the mid-year review.
I'm interested in, yeah, this issue of, um, attendance rate among staff is basically, um, yeah, that's, that's a big issue I've been working on at the state level, because the state level doesn't fund us.
Yeah.
Kind of, um, attendance, or the, that's what we're getting, so, yeah, that's. Do you have any sense of why is it related to the, see, I think a lot of this is related to the K family medical leave, the fact that the state passed and forgot the term, both, I don't know, is that, is that true?
I, I think there are various factors that are involved. I, you know, I think it would be really hard to pinpoint one at this point. Um, the reason why, when I was going through this with, um, with O S P I, is that it is, it's a, it's a mitigating factor, right, and in terms of, and then, you know, it's really, um, and then there's that other piece of finding, you know, adequate sub-coverage.
Yeah.
You know, and we're constantly, you know, or having that constantly, but we've been in, in situations where we've had to pull our interventionists off to cover classrooms. So.
Yeah, I'd be interested if you ever come up with, you know, some, any, any base reasons, because, you know, it may or may not, you know, be mitigatable at the state level, I don't know, but, yeah, so.
Yeah. And then the next slide is. Go ahead.
Conversation, as an executive leader for years, the hard gauge is that when the morale goes down, attendance goes. So, yes, there may be variables. The truth of the matter is, there's been communicated, says the overall morale of the district is down of the teachers, and so that may be a variable. Also, and it's just hard to figure out where you're gonna measure that at, but we have received communication. Where our, our morale with the district is that, so, I mean, we can work toward it. I don't know, you're gonna put that on the metrics, but as a board member who's listening, I hear it, so. And this, it's not surprising that it shows, but.
And some of that, I think you need to kind of dig under, or give a sort of, and there's some of the source of it is, particularly as we go into the difficult net situation, but there isn't enough support for staff, which is trans, typically, which can, clearly translates to money. So, you know, that's, that's all good to know, you know, when you're talking with the state and saying, okay, the impacts of what you're assuming is this, uh, staff.
Yeah, and most certainly, including that information was not, that was just to identify that, you know, it is, the attendance is an issue for various reasons.
Yes.
Um, you know, there's a lot, there's also a lot of illness that have been, you know, that's going on too. And kids are sick constantly, and it's just, it, it spreads like wildfire in the classrooms, so. Okay, and then, uh, the next slide, Teen Read, uh, which is our second year of having them, we're targeting, uh, grades, uh, second and third. Um, we are partnering with our, uh, our students from Foster High School, so they're mentoring our, our students. And that's been, um, the program's been a really, uh, it's been a big success. And I think in terms of trying to, uh, looking at getting some additional, uh, students enrolled in that program is most certainly looking at doing that.
Are you working out your hours?
You do that, but I don't. Yeah, I did it freshman. On day.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. What's, what's the access, what's on the S S S on this, my graph?
So, uh, graph one is but number of books read independently after twelve sessions, so it varies from.
Yeah, that's the one I asked, what's the asset?
The, on the side there is.
Are these individual students or?
Yes, those are individual students.
Okay, each one of those bars is one student.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
And then, um, then any other, okay, we're good. And then the next slide is race and equity plan update. Uh, we've identified, uh, draft goals, and you'll be hearing from our race and equity leads on that information. Um, so we've drafted, uh, some, uh, goals to include, which are here, um, and that we're working also with our, uh, E S D partners and, uh, um, we'll be continuing that work. Uh, and our staff meetings will be some dedicated time coming up that I'll be working with our, our race equity team that leads to, um, to make sure that this is at the forefront of the work that we're doing.
Just in addition to the lesson plan component for substitutes, what is that, this might be a bigger question than you'd be more of an air question, but, um, kind of what is the process, do we have a way of like screening substitutes or knowing what, um, you know, culturally responsive, understanding substitutes have before they're walking into our buildings? Because if that, if we don't have an understanding of that, having a whole really relevant curriculum or lesson plan, maybe not implemented in the right ways or included at all, I'm so curious if that's a process that you really have.
I, I, I don't know of, of, of any specific process that we have in place. Um, I do know that there's a hiring process for substitutes, and I'm not, you know, I, on the H R side, I'm not sure exactly what that entails. So I don't want to give any information that I'm, I'm not aware of.
All right, um, so we'll move to our first opportunity, uh, this evening for public comment. Uh, so there are multiple ways that you can, um, sign up for public comment. One is if you're a person, um, incentive where you can always email in or write a public comment, um, which we have one this evening. Uh, if you're joining us personally and like a public comment, you can put your name through chat, um, or use that raise hand feature, and then we will follow you to speak. Well, sure, Lewis is up there, uh, make sure. And while I'm up here, if you haven't yet signed in, please do so. Um, it's, okay, there's no one in person in a public comment, anyone online, not seeing any, all right, so I'm gonna read. Uh, the recent public comment, have you received this? Okay, this is. This is in regards to the district's decision to end the subsidy for the Champions Before After School Program, effective March fifteen point twenty-four. Uh, requesting a petition that each of elementary schools by end of this week to collect signatures of other families that agree with the statement on the petition, which will follow these remarks that should provide context. Due to the late notification of this decision, families were told on Friday, February twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, and the current board meeting schedule. Uh, the signatures could not be collected before a regular scheduled board meeting. The negative impact of the district's decision will be felt by families starting March eighteen, which is a week before the next board meeting on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. It is unclear if the timing of this decision was a deliberate attempt to prevent the public from addressing the board about this issue. Apparently, originally, the district had proposed to end the subsidy on March one with the same notification timeline. The statement on the petition is as follows. The Champions Before After School Program currently serves about a hundred and fifty elementary school families in the Tepulacool District. Before-after school programs are essential to closing the achievement and opportunity gap. These programs are key partners for schools and families, providing underserved students their meaningful academic and enrichment activities, keeping kids safely off the streets during the prime time for juvenile crime, and offering necessary childcare for working parents. The families who are served by the Champions Program register for an entire school year of subsidized services. To abruptly end the subsidies for the Champions Program is placing unnecessary financial strain and emotional stress on these families. To expect families to come up with up to seven hundred per month for one child or alternative before and after school services is an unreasonable burden and is not fair to the families. We, the undersigned individuals, support the Champions Program and urge the Tepulacool District to continue funding the Champions Program and to develop a plan to keep these high-quality programs subsidized in the future. End petition statement. On this side note, as long, as a longtime employee of this district, this is my thirty-fourth year. I started at Thorndike in nineteen ninety, and have been at Foster since nineteen ninety-seven. I made the conscious decision to have two of my three children attend Tepulacool Schools, even though I don't live in the district. I had to argue with the district in nineteen ninety-nine to let my other district son attend Cascade View at a time when other district students weren't allowed to enroll. My daughter is currently a second grader at Tepulacool Elementary School. Not only am I bringing another F T E into the district, I am publicly stating to the community that I will leave in the Tepulacool District and fully believe this is the place that is the best place for my child to attend school. However, due to the starting and ending times of the high school and the elementary schools without services provided by Champions, I would not be able to have my daughter attend schools in Tepulacool. The district needs to develop a plan to accommodate staff who want their children to attend Tepulacool Schools. I know that there are other staff who are in the same situation and others who are bringing their child here, if there was a convenient way to make it work. The ten percent employed discount for Champion Services, once the subsidy is removed, is not an incentive for me to continue to have my daughter attend schools here. I don't have an extra seven hundred dollars per month to pay for continued Champion Services when I build my budget based on the fact that women registered for Champions in September were registering for the entire year at the subsidized rate. It seems like we entered into a contract between us, Champions, and the Tepulacool District. The district is now attempting to change the terms of the contract. Please, for myself and the hundred and fifty families that are being impacted by this decision, reconsider. Signing, Tim Lenz. Um, I know that we'll have some time during the budget conversation, um, where we'll ask, um, Chief Redback to speak a little bit to, uh, that particular, um, uh, comment. Right, any additional public comments that came up while we were reading, does it look like it? All right, so that'll bring us to the report section of our agenda, I'm gonna be able to go with other students.
Um, so, uh, first, this, this month, Dennis and I and Doctor Josiah attended the Education Roundtable, and we discussed the meaning of post-secondary success, which refers to what it takes to sufficiently prepare students for the transition from the K through twelve system to the many career path that I have here. And we also highlighted the pros and cons of C T E classes and how they can increase the likelihood of a high school student having a job by age thirty. And this month, we also had a follow-up meeting for the student advisory group, and we skimmed over applicants and decided that Dennis and I would, would assist and intimate applicants with incomplete applications. And we also touched on the idea of having the first project to write the anti-resisting, we could have to pull this with us. And, but also, this month, I also helped connect, um, Naomi, the communications leader, and my visual communications teacher, um, so that students could possibly help with future projects and tasks and make the field of communications, put it to post with this.
Yep. I would just appreciate the intentionality around interviewing folks that have incomplete applications, often had this like such a practice that we're just like, oh, that's missing something, we're gonna throw it out or whatever, but just like, the intention of your own, that's all. More questions for us? All right. And I'll just add, that was their idea, the anti-resist statement, being, um, participating in the, the training. It's their idea that they wanted to do that with the student vice reports, so we have, we might have a statement for it, but, I'm just letting them know. Um, anyway, I, I suppose, they can't talk, the students, so I might have to follow them. But anyway, I, of course, I want to thank, uh, two families, uh, business partner staff, union leadership, and all our citizens committee volunteers uh, for your actions over the past, gosh, it feels, yes. But especially for the past two months with, uh, you know, signage and, uh, door belling and the meetings we had every Thursday and the contributions, uh, just thank you. Uh, both of these passed with over sixty-four percent, um, approval rating, which is actually huge and a lot higher than some of the others, so we're really thankful for all of that. I just want to say that, uh, it's an amazing community that did that. Um, and I also just also want to highlight that it's Public Education Week, everybody. And so just want to personally thank all the public school educators in Tepulacool District, uh, for your service to our students every day. So thank you so much. Uh, just a little update, uh, we have most of Cascade View teachers back in the Cascade View buildings. Uh, we've got still music and some things to work through, but, uh, but most of the teachers are back. Um, we probably will not be back till sometime, it looks, but the district and my office will probably be till April. Um, but we're still hanging on, and we're, um, we'll get some information as soon as we know, and we know that they're putting up sheetrock right now, so, um, that's what we know. Um, just, I have some good news to share, uh, COVID numbers are going down, yes, um, there's significantly decreased since last month. Um, and there's a reduction in adult COVID cases. And actually, but I will say that the nurses are noticing an uptick in stomach-related illnesses, that's in the health report. Uh, but it's not enough to warrant a contact with public health, uh, but they're monitoring the situation. And, um, I want to thank, personally thank Dr. Director Proctor, uh, for helping connecting us with your daughter. Uh, so just to share that on, uh, February twenty-fourth, um, the connection was for the Desa Brown, uh, 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 Children's Clinic, um, and Seattle Children's, the Desa Brown Clinic, and so we had our first, uh, clinic, uh, opening on the twenty-fourth, the fifteenth, fourth, we saw thirty-one patients, and we've mentioned sixty-nine vaccinations, so thank you, thank you, thank you for that. And, um, would like to send our personal thanks to your daughter as well for that connection. Um, just other friends, I'm not gonna follow up on my entry, it's exactly what we needed to say, um, just, uh, we had our, um, Tepulacool Children's Foundation meeting last week, uh, where we, uh, and the focus of the Tepulacool Children's Foundation is to meet the unmet needs of our community's children. And, um, at the most recent meeting, we had discussions centered on several grant proposals, and each targeted towards literacy and to broaden access to arts. Uh, and we have our next meeting in March, we're gonna talk about fundraising, we have a couple of members here on that, and um, I'm honored to serve in, in that capacity as an ex of CEO and, um, you know, on that, on that board. Um, we talked about the Gates Roundtable, that's awesome, Stillwater, just want to highlight everything that in the newsletter and the family, and the newsletter, we had a story about the Stillwater, making sure people read about Stillwater and the history and, um, just to share what Stillwater does since two thousand and sixteen. It's been a beacon of hope for our families, uh, who are in transition and ensuring that students are nourished and ready to learn. Um, and we just want to let people know about the weekend snack pack program that provides, um, you know, sustenance and fostering belonging and empowerment for our families. Um, and we have many, many dedicated volunteers who come every Wednesday to do those, uh, to get, pack up that food and continue. Um and we have many, many dedicated volunteers who come every Wednesday to do those, uh, to get, pack up that food and continue to support our families. Uh and we keep adding families, by the way, and, and so, um, it's, it's just really great to have communities more of that support. Uh I just wanted to rah rah for our foster cheer team's participation. Look, I wasn't a cheerleader, sorry, my sister, why the, not me, um, but anyway, but they had that competition and so. Uh they showcased this and we have, they have a stop and shake style at the recent state competition, so. Uh while they didn't secure a placement, they were energetic and I think we have some, uh, pictures of all of that, uh, it was very creative and impactful. Um also, most of our high school students qualified for the Washington Music Educators Association All-State Performance in February. Uh a talented student from most of our high school earned a spot in the prestigious Washington Music Educators Association. Uh All-State Performance, showcasing their exceptional musical abilities and dedication to craft. Uh also celebrating director fans, Cody Maynor, who is a worthy dedication. To our students' play a significant role in the music, in the student's success. Um and then finally, CTE, all the CTE teachers, oh my God, thank you so much, our winter CTE open house, oh my God, it was amazing. Um I know I went through as many of the classes as I can and it was really great to get a glimpse. Into what our students are, just we had students there also showcasing some of the, uh, some of the, uh, the activities that they do. They had clean hand-on demonstrations, we had presentations, attendees explored diverse pathways. And uh we're gonna have a coming spring, uh, open house and we'll have more information to share with the community, so I, it was, I, I was so impressed, it was really a great. It was a great moment for all of us, so, yeah. That was a lot. Alright, um so that'll raise to our, your reports.
Sure, mine's pretty easy, we're still trying to work with Allen, I sent over the information over to my suit. Trying to get them back into Foster High School, they offer fast food training for our students. Um that targets them, they want to sign in with us to get a contract so that they can bring there. Um it's all free, you know, and they'll come in and make sure that, you know, especially for our students that parents didn't go to college and didn't have. Um access to that, and so this will get them through their fast food forms, get it all filled out, get everything in there, and so they're, they're definitely ready to go. We just need to figure out. We just need to say yes, yes, basically, so it'd be really great to get them back in here and partner with us. A good idea, I think.
Thank you, um, my thoughts are quite quick, to be honest, um, if you've been paying attention, it's been a very busy month for the board, particularly at the beginning of the month. Um and so, really, that's kind of, that's my report, we were able to. Um reschedule our recent equity training that took place on, um, the twelfth of this month. Um so it was a full day, um, of just learning and reflecting and really thinking about like what the next steps are. And actually moving towards, um, what we, uh, believe, uh, as far as anti-racist practices in our district. Um and then we've had several other board meetings in addition to that, um, so.
I have a listen on the sentence above you, who's been a busy mom about Angela, I'm glad to hear. That the vaccination clinic worked out to the point of sixty plus. And it's also, uh, working with a group called the Practice School down in Seattle, who's looking to. Come for the South or Tepulaw, they look at their cu- current budget strengths to do some, uh. Mental programs in schools here, particularly middle and high school in our district, so. Been working with it twelve few years now, so we're, we're Seattle progresses.
So. People are partly aware, one of the, uh, interesting topics during our education these days is artificial intelligence, you know. Especially reading a book, AI for the Rest of Us, that has a whole chapter on. The need for teaching AI in eight-fold education, and I know our, um, Dr. Petrosa's talked about this, you know, the basic theme is. You know, we need to have diverse people to develop and use AI, I have a place, it's gonna potentially not go, go off the track, so. Anyway, made a really good point about, um, you know, getting it. The awareness of it and the usage of it, and even, even at elementary school to start, you know, start getting integrated into the environment. Since it's gonna probably become a very big part of our world, uh, faster than we would probably even think. Um, I went to, um, girls' basketball game, so our girls', uh, basketball. You know, came just close to getting the state finals this year. Um, they had, uh, they played a team from over on the peninsula. And, uh, lost by two points in overtime, uh, Foster. Um, it was, it was interesting that. There weren't really that many, I, I was, I, I don't think we publicized it that much, because there were. I think there were more fans from Kingston High School that they were playing than there were at Foster there, because I don't. I just thought I kind of found out, kind of accidentally, I was looking at that script, so I kind of liked to keep track of that. So I didn't even know that we had a, you know, we're having a playoff, this is a playoffs in preparation for the, uh, state finals, so. Anyway, I think, hopefully, we can do a little bit of publicizing of that in the future, I know. Our athletic director gets out the thing, uh, was getting out for the regular season, but it seemed like the playoffs kind of got lost in just a little. Of that, but, um, anyway, so they came, you know, with them, they were particularly, um. What I've known with the years, Foster had the very never say die spirit, they were down seventeen points in the first half. And then came back and tied it up and then went into overtime and lost it to. After their best player fouled out in overtime, so. Anyway, they came just, it was close for being one of the best, you know, six, probably sixteen teams go to state, and so they came really, really close. The other thing I was brought up is, I was looking, so, um, apparently Foster was hosting. Uh playoffs from a number of different, both the boys and girls' schools in the areas on the two A, um, division. Our scoreboard thought was, our scoreboards were kind of missing a lot of lights, which looks a little, um, tacky for us. So hopefully we can get our lights replaced on the scoreboard, especially when you have, you know, people coming from around the state, uh, to, to look at our school. Yeah, right. Anyway, congratulations to the girls, they had a really great year, and the great thing about them is, I think only two of them are seniors, so they're gonna be back next year for the vengeance. And so hopefully they'll get to the, get to the state, um, picture. Um, I went to, uh, NCC, which is the National Council on Computers and Education Conference up in Seattle. Uh because, um, we had a couple of our, um, staff, uh, several staff reviewing presentations up there led by. Darren Hayes, who's our, um, instructional coach. He had one session, uh, which he also had some of the, our MLL instructors coach up there. Talking about an interesting, uh, Google program called rewrite, which among other things, it translates, it, um. Allows students to speak, and it's a great tool for, um, MLL students in particular. But, you know, often, as they're, uh, trying to learn English and. Help even, you know, with their, uh, their native languages, so, um. That was really good, and there was another, gave another session with one of our, uh, speech language apologists on. Assisted technology and how we're using different, um. Uh technologies to help students who are, um, they can't speak and are learning how to communicate for the first time. Um, anyway, it was, um. They did a, they did a really great job, it's, it's interesting, I asked Darren if how much this rewrite, um. Program is used in our district, and it's not a whole lot used, so as we're kind of reviewing our, um. The technical strategies and so forth, and, and we focused on MLL students in particular. Hopefully we can figure out how to incorporate some of these, these really powerful tools into the, into the learning and into the training for everybody. Um, the others that I tended, there was really interesting was from, uh, some books over in North Kitsap School District, that's around the peninsula. And they had a really interesting way of, they're, we talked about it a little bit, but incorporating. Uh the MTSS framework, so that's the, you know, the multi-year, uh, support system, which is a framework for. How we support the whole student, not just the academics, but also the social emotional, the whole thing. And they were doing, um, they had developed an interesting dashboard, which I never talked about, which incorporates how they're doing in their academics. And their attendance and their behavior and their social emotional measures. So, um, anyway, for anybody in the staff interest, I can, I can refer you over to them, they can spend some really nice. Uh, I'll give some really nice examples for how to do that, so if you're interested in doing that, I can, um, send you over there. Um, echoing Dr. Petrosa's, uh, I went down last night to the city council and, um. Thank the city council for, um, their resolution, they came out with a resolution supporting our levy and, and the fact that it passed and everything, it was, it was really good. Uh, the new thing, but I hadn't know, we have a new city administrator now, um. David Klein was there for many years, uh, has left and, uh, somebody called Marty Wine is the interim, um, uh. City administrator. We had, in Tepulaw, we had, uh, what's called a mayor council, and so the administrator is kind of overseeing all the. Operations of the, um, of the staff, so, anyway, it's something. A new, new player put in the mix when we were talking about looking at the, um, city. Um, I had a, uh, a good meeting just this afternoon with, uh, the environmental science club of that Foster. Um, so they're interested in, you know, in particular, in seeing if we can get some solar panels in some of our buildings, and so. Um, what I, they're, they're doing, uh, some research, so what I advised them was to, to do as much research as they can. And then set up a, you know, kind of a, uh, board presentation on what they found. They had a lot of good ideas, we talked about, we brainstormed a lot of things, and so hopefully they'll be, um. This is a, a kind of a multi-year project for the environmental science club, that, that the concept is this, this group of students are now. And pass it on to the next group, and because it's something, this is obviously a multi-year project, but. Anyway, they'll be looking at, you know, things like, you know, funding sources, where does it make sense to put it economically? You know, how does it fit into our system, so they're gonna get a good education in, in, uh, how you get projects going, and so. Anyway, I'll be looking forward to, to hearing from them, um. And, um. The, oh, the last man is, is kind of in, in recognition as we come to the end of Black History Month, one of my favorite, um. Uh, uh. Leaders in the black community over the years is John Lewis, who is, um, you know, civil rights, voting rights person. I, I always cite him when, when students are, uh, kind of discouraged, they're advocating for something that they don't get right away. John Lewis is an example of persistence, I mean, he pursues. Ground is like, starting with, uh, you know, the event, those groups in Southern Alabama, where he got beaten for advocating for civil rights, you know, right on to. It is, as, you know, as he passed away a few years ago, the Voting Rights Act named for John Lewis, it, it hasn't got enacted yet, but. Anyway, it's, it's an example of a lifetime of, uh, service to the, to the black community and to the country as a whole, so. Anyway, just wanted to recognize him, so.
Any questions?
Oh, you wanted to. Yeah, let's say, um. Okay, I don't say a lot about. Sorry, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time, so the legislative department is starting to, to come to the. End of their tech and which means a lot of things are, a lot of the levels that were on there are dying for this year, but they'll. They come back to here, I'm just gonna comment on. Uh, in terms of the money this year, it doesn't look like there's, uh, we kind of knew this going in, there wasn't gonna be a whole lot of. New money coming to school districts because this is what they call the, you know, the supplemental year, so they don't tend to add a lot. Uh, it's more prep rate, you know, trying to prepare for next year when they'll be doing the full two-year budget, but. We may get a little more, uh, especially, they're, they're talking about raising the, the cap from the fifteen percent of, of students funded for special ed to. Um, the, the highest level was seventeen point two five and some others are fifteen point two, so that's going back and forth between the house, so. We may get a little more, a little higher cap on, on special education, which may help us, depending, we're right on that, on that limit, so we'll see how that goes. Um, there is some more money, not very much for what's called materials supply and operating, so that would be covering like our insurance costs. Which are going through the news, this, it's not, again, it's not anywhere near what we need, but there may be a little bit more there. Um, it looks like there's gonna be a little more allocation for parent educators, maybe a couple more for us, which again, isn't. Nearly enough, but it's a little, and then, um. There may be a little bit more for transportation as well, um. The only, I would kind of talk about, uh, for a longer term, there's Hospital Thirty Sixty Eight, they want to get. School districts to electric buses, um, over time, and one of the things, of course, you know, for us. You know, it's fine if they'll, they'll fund the electric bus, but then you also have to have the infrastructure in place to charge them and. As some, uh, school districts found out, you know, when it gets really cold. You gotta have an area where it can be warmed, the battery stay warm, so. Anyway, the bills, it's been going back and forth, but there apparently will be somewhat of a net for preparing, so in our case, you know. Like we need to have the infrastructure or the transportation yard, so hopefully we'll be able to maybe get some, some grand money for that to start to get ready. For when, uh, when we can actually, uh, get the electric buses. The other one I was mentioning is, uh, Fifty Four Fifty Two, this is included learning standards and technical materials, this is one of the super controversial. It's about including LBDQ, um, both in the, in learning and instruction materials and. It's a debate now between the conservative parts of particularly, you know, Martin Tenen, and, um. Last year, this bill, you know, got almost to the end and finally the Democrats decided to try and push it over, so it didn't happen. It's back again and they're about, and they're battling again, so I don't know how this is gonna come out, but, um, hopefully we get some, some movement on that one, so. Uh, I think that's, yeah, so that'll be it, unless there's any questions.
Thank you very much for the update and for, of course, all of your work that you do, that you're willing to advocate for our students, everything, um. So, alright, that brings us next to the consent agenda. Your motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, um, I just want to say a big thank you, um, we've been busy, and that also means, um, our meeting, that of course, we've been busy. So many waiting minutes, um, also, thank you. Um, alright, so now onto our question-only portion of, of the. Meeting, um, beginning with the ELL and your one pitch, for. A few and I call this, we have all these questions for Thorndike, so. And what is your, so I was looking at, um, page two, um, of the report and that full colored graph thing. Let me clear that down, um, yeah, uh, it carries about, we have data around other intersecting identities. Uh in connection and in association with impacting students' longevity within the program.
Um, when you speak to intersect identities, are you talking about like? The languages they speak, the countries they come from, they're, this is like which component?
So, literally any intersecting identities, right, so thinking about gender, class, socioeconomic status. Um, yeah, so we're talking about language, right, so the language, I think I understand, but other. Intersection qualities and the impact that might have on people's longevity or ability to adhere to the program. In the, I think this is our year five year time, right?
Yeah, so we don't have that for you tonight, so we can certainly get some, thank you.
That's fair, so the, um, yeah, when we started, um, you were saying, twenty twenty-two, what was done before?
There was a test prior to that called the ELPA, and that was done for a few years, and before that, there was a test called the WLPT two. Washington State has changed its English language proficiency assessment several times over the last ten to fifteen years. And so when, um, when we look at things like percent progressing. Um, really, the spring of twenty twenty-three is the first year, we had two years of WEDA data points in order to make those determinations, and so. Some of the, like, what it looked like one year to what it looked like the next, when we were changing tests, I mean, the little bit of. Comparison is difficult because they're not the same. Washington State joined the WEDA consortium a few years ago, which means, that's why we're using that assessment. And when we joined the WEDA consortium, we joined like thirty-nine other states, so most other states are using WEDA, we were using ELPA. Um, which is something that's like California uses, but not, most other states do not, and so we changed consortia. Um, and then the first year really was meant to be the spring of twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, and as you know, those were interrupted with. The pandemic, so.
Um, here's to our professional learning labs, are they optional for, Seth?
Yes, each school was offered, uh, for the math labs, each school was offered a number of slots that they could. Yes, each school was offered uh for the math labs, each school was offered a number of slots that they could. Have staff participate in and that was based on what our funding was available. They actually filled and we've had a hard time getting subs and so some of them have been left unfilled because we we had. Funding for the subs, so we didn't maybe, we didn't have subs to pick up the positions, but yeah.
I have a question, I know last time we were talking about the year this was, but I have a question around. If there's a mechanism for assessing, we've got reading or literacy proficiency. In the language with which these young blood are interested speaking. Um and the answer is no, there's not, right? So um I'm curious if. Um I know it's probably been a month since I asked that question, um but if there's been some thought around like what? That might have looked like. Um and then my other question is kind of connected to that, I actually didn't know that we that we are ready in Spanish. Is that an option for all of our Spanish speaking students or only the students that are in the dual language classroom?
So currently, it's for students who are in the dual language classroom because we have a real strong belief that we want to assess kids in languages that we instruct them in. And so for some of our other students, I would say particularly, let's say, Spanish speakers in elementary school, most of them have not been instructed in Spanish. Formally, which is what those assessments would assess, so it's not to say that we don't have it available, maybe it for students to move in and we could. Put them in the Spanish in the diagnostic, but our like. Assessment philosophy is that we want to assess kids in languages in which they're instructed. Because otherwise, what we often find out from them is like, oh, we didn't do all this test and we didn't actually teach you the things in advance.
So just wondering curious about that those. If the intent of those assessments is to measure proficiency. We're not measuring proficiency if they can't read the language with which they're taking the test. So maybe we then need to reassess our assessment philosophy. Or reconsider like the the impact that might have, because again. I mean, I can understand, I I I should maybe hear where that came from, but at the same time. Those proficiency, they understand that, then we're not, we're not actually giving them an opportunity to differentiate their proficiency. Either when they enter our district or on a yearly basis with their teaching and the sort of assessment.
Yeah, definitely worth of discussion with our assessment team.
Just want to say something about assessments and language proficiency, it was language development and language proficiency and then there's academic like development and academic proficiency. And so I guess what we have to be really clear is what the purpose of each task is for, I mean. What is the purpose of this task? For the, you know, the other piece, I want to just make sure that we're able to decide whatever we're going to do. That one of the big things later, all the time from teachers, all over the place is over assessing kids. So they're helping all over the back, I heard you. And I also believe that we don't want to do be in that place either too, so I just want to ensure that they're own choose. Um because I know like, for example. Who assess students, just using my background experience, for example, when you're assessing a student, for example. For a less certification, IP evaluation, for example, um that is a really good example when really understanding the student's language and activity to their language. If in the English language and the natural language is a really good way to even cross from there, right, in terms of what the student actually needs. Um but the this one, we have to sort of determine what the purpose is of the assessment and then determine what. What what the much language is the preferred assessment. Um bridge for the students. Sorry, I just got mentioned stuff there, but I went into my. Okay, legal. So I think this could be a conversation that we bring up in the future, more meetings, um what we're thinking about. Kind of assess as well as Italy, that's more than just like a schedule of assessment, because we've seen that, but really having that that. That zoomed out conversation of what it is or do we need to testify and um. So we're going to take it back to the assessment team, correct? That's the next step, we have an assessment team. It comprises of, can you share what the assessment team is comprised of?
So we have staff from teaching and learning, staff from the assessment department and then uh as it relates to anything with assessments. That we were choosing, if we're choosing to adopt or change, we would leave that to the curriculum council as well.
Which is how does that teach you?
Which is, yeah, comprised of teachers and administrators.
So one thing, so I always like to kind of look at is. We are relative to the state and I'm just looking at the percent progressing, you know, we're pretty much in line with. You know, what's going on statewide except. In second grade, we're way ahead of what the state is, so I'm always interested to look. And this is just one year, so it's, you know, it's hard to tell there's offenders in that particular class, but. I'm always interested in when we're performing way above the state, what's going on in this happens, I don't have any idea. What was going on, and this is second grade across all schools, so I would say.
I think. So I'm not a statistician, right, but what I see in there is those second graders spent kindergarten in person, whereas. Like the last couple of years, second graders didn't necess, because if we think about who win kid, our third graders this year were in kindergarten at the start of COVID. And our second graders this year have had more in-person instruction, I think when it comes to language development.
Yeah.
That time with their peers and with their teachers, we're going to see some shifts. As we move forward for that group in particular, so when I saw second grade, that was.
Yeah.
One of the things that I thought with that.
Okay. Um the other thing as far as um like the annual multilingual report, um. I I think, as I said, I think it's important um. To include the world language report, I mean, you indicate well, that's available every day, that's true, but. The world language credit program is, I think, particularly important for our students because. It's it's one of the few situations where we represent, we celebrate athletes that student brings, you know, so. So I think it's, I like, we haven't had the the dual language or the world language report and for those uh new people, so. The program that is in a lot of districts where students, if they can demonstrate proficiency in their own language, we will give them high school credits for that. And so they can get four high school credits and lots of our students do that and. You know, when we first introduced this program, you know, students jumped on it like that, and it's always interesting for me to. To look at, you know, it's a geography lesson, you look at all the different languages, because we can get a credit in almost any language amazingly, because of the. Assets we have in this area, so anyway, it is, it would be nice to include that in this report, because I think it sounds out the picture of what we're doing for our for our M L students, because I think it. It bumps their self-esteem up when they can give these extra credit. Um the other thing, I didn't see in here and I was attentive because I was going to the N C E conference was. And what are we using, what technologies are we using? Um I mean, we have a whole bunch of different tools in our. So we've now stretched it all, which current software technologies are available, I'm not sure how. Effectively, we're necessarily using all of them, so anyway, some some mention about, you know, the technologies, which ones we're using and which ones are not effective, but not effective would. Would be nice in part of this report. Um and the other, the the last item is, which I've been talking about for a number of years, is. It's kind of related to the world language, but how do we? How do we incorporate some of our community access into particularly maintaining strengths for our students in their heritage languages? So when I'm thinking about, you know, religious institutions, the mosque and the Buddhist center, I mean, a lot of times students will be. Picking up their native language there and strengthening it and um I know a lot of students, and when we first introduced the world language credit. And, you know, we thought that, well, if I know who's going to credit, why would I pay attention to, you know, my native language more, so. There's just that little nudge that gives them, you know, so um to the extent that we can figure out, I don't think we've ever done that, reached out to the, you know, mosque here. The Buddhist center, the Gethsei Church and, you know, wherever wherever they they could be picking up language skills that we want to. You know, kind of, and and we could be feeding information to them, because a lot of our students come with, you know, they can speak, they're maybe a little bit of reading writing. And so if that community group knew, well, okay, this is the Asian writing skill, and so then they can pass a little language to get better, so. Anyway, those are the things that I think about for as part of a whole picture of looking at how we support our our M L students.
Thank you.
The initial questions? All right, and the next is the high revenue second diagnosis. And then you mentioned the joint work was being as well, but this is going to be one of the talks that are coming for session. Then we'll look at differently. March clock first of March clock, the the work session is going to probably come like the first of all.
I guess I was. Um I guess first of all, in general, most of this is. Proficiency, which is interesting, that's good, but but growth is what I'm I'm always interested in about, though. I I'm still a little curious about on page twenty one, this one where. So this this keeping in mind that this is the middle of the year, this is not, you know, a full year. And so any any time students are achieving basically their their typical, which is already. That's a huge advance over, you know, everything, but I'm just, I'm always curious why typical elementary, you know, the reading typical. This thing zero, I mean, I read your. Your thing here, but it doesn't quite make sense to me, because, you know, the other schools are actually failing. You know, decent number of students, um but not huge, I guess, in reading, but. Yeah, I think it. So that's saying zero, and this recognizes halfway through the year.
Yes.
Is is that? Why is it that none of the students at typical elementary have achieved their?
No, these are just the students that are two plus years behind.
Oh, I mean, that's right, yeah, two plus years behind, yeah.
So I'm sure, but I'm sure the ones above that have made, they could have possibly made stretch growth.
Okay.
The ones that are on grade, the ones that are.
Yeah.
A year behind in on grade level.
Or maybe that that typical elementary, there there's less students that are too.
I would tell you the number, but it's less than ten.
Yeah, okay, that's what I. All right, all right. I guess.
Okay. But I thought these graphs were pretty pretty neat.
Yeah, that I can. I mean, I'm really, I mean, they're pretty impressive ones. You know, fifth grade has. About sixty eight percent of the students have already achieved their entire, you know, years of growth in recent, you know. Sixteen, you know, and that's for one year or two or more years behind, are the ones that.
Fantastic.
Those are the ones we need to focus on more, so yeah, there's some pretty um. Impressive numbers, you know, also second grade, you know, math, that Caspi view, you know.
Yep.
But. Looking good so far.
And I would share one thing just to add, we have a new session with the school leaders with our need to kind of maybe dig into the data. We looked at some individuals, it's it's nice when you look at the growth and you focus on the graph, but when we looked at individual students, we had some real students that made huge significant growth and so. We're not about growth.
Yeah.
Focusing on the growth is critical, right? Like it's it's about, it's not about always the metric, it's about growth, right? And so. We had to tell those people, celebrate that. That's great, because um some of that, some of the growth was incredible in some of our schools and so, especially in smaller students. Who worked so hard, so and that the fact that it is only mid-year is was pretty significant, so, yeah, so.
And what's interesting is if we can kind of. Reflect on some of the students and what are they could get other conditions, I mean, everybody's different, but, you know, try and figure out. Are there things that can be transferred or?
I mean, I just, we also want to really honor our teachers who led the students to these great achievements.
Yeah.
All right, next is enrollment reports. We can all kind of do this together, the monthly report, monthly budgets, I should for that again, any additional questions on those?
Very good group, let's get. So. Yeah, and I kind of figured out this um. Transportation safety net dollars situation, but it's like I was looking. Um everybody around us, how I got it, I'm got it, we didn't get it, why?
So we did.
What is it that we're, yeah, there's something that I don't understand about, and say, say, am I. Understanding that it was basically for, you know, after for special students, special students and. And students experiencing homelessness, which we definitely have, so. You know, what did we do that we didn't get?
Right, so I I believe that we just couldn't demonstrate that excess need, so when we applied for the safety net funding. Um we put in the cost that we um. Provide specifically for uh those areas. Um and we just couldn't demonstrate that need, so that's not to say that we're not going to go back um and reapply. Uh look at the uh information more closely and make sure our our costs are in line and calculated correctly, so we're we're not getting enough. Um but we just weren't awarded uh this round.
Well, I think I think this round is the round, because looking at especially the O S P I has and. Last year, the the those that are up to fifteen million dollars and it's all spent.
Right.
So there is no other rounds.
Well, we'll look at uh when they probably come up with funding again for next year, yes, yes.
But I'm still, I'm confused about the the process for determining need. I mean, Mercy Island got a hundred thousand.
I know.
We don't have need.
I know, I think we have need, I think we just weren't able to demonstrate it um as effectively as any of the other districts.
Uh yeah, how do you? How do you demonstrate it?
Well, you have to go through and analyze your costs and figure out your routes and your drivers, and so it was easy for us, for the McKinvento students, because we contract out a hundred percent of our costs to a third party.
Yeah.
Um so that cost was really easy to determine, uh it was some of those other costs that just it took an exorbitant amount of time. And had it been in the district three months ago, um probably could have spent a lot more time uh working. Not only with our internal folks, but then working with some of the other school districts to see what they were doing as well. Um to come up with, you know, what is it, what are what are the allocations, what are you guys um putting forth um as costs, so. You know, part of it is just I walked in at the very last minute.
Yeah.
Um and tried to try to get an application through the system.
Right.
Um it was, it was just really difficult, so we we tried the best that we could and and then we weren't funded, so.
Okay, but yeah, it's if if there's something in the law, I assume. Most of these conditions are coming out of O S P I and they're kind of rulemaking authority.
Correct.
I mean, if they're writing something that's, you know, we we can't read and we need to know that, it goes screaming. At O S P I or something, but.
I agree.
Yeah, because, yeah, we need to figure that out.
Well, I think, yeah, we grew down the need.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think we want to learn from, I think the most part is to learn from what happened, so that we can ensure that we are in a better place.
Yeah, we're not real far, it's years I can go every street around and scout it, so.
Well, and I I think part of our learning is to reach out to those districts as well and say, okay, what is it, what did you do? How were you effective in receiving this funding? Um while we weren't, so that we can learn from that, so that we know what to do in the future as well.
Okay.
And that is part of it.
Yeah, there.
I have one question.
Sure.
Um. Safety net last year for Spark, there's a, is it a field process? Is there a field process?
Yes, but we also have to be really careful, because if, as we apply for safety nets, special ed safety net funding. Uh we can include transportation costs in that and you can't double dip, so you either apply through the transportation safety net funding and get awarded, or you apply through the special ed safety net. They shouldn't have called it safety net, they called it both safety net.
Yeah.
And and so we will be including costs, the transportation costs related to special ed students um that we have demonstrated for need. Through that process, um and so we're, we actually had a meeting in that today um to discuss the uh all the information together to apply for the special ed safety net funding.
Yeah, I guess.
Such a conversation is not over, don't worry, all right. Um that brings us to our presentation, we have two this evening, um very excited about both. And also a little more excited about this first one. Uh, I'm so grateful to have all of our recent equity leads, uh, or the committee present. Um, so. Uh, come on up, y'all. Look at your chairs if you need to.
Good speaker, CMT chair right here. Um, Scott with tech, chief academic officer. Thanks for the opportunity to present on the work of this fantastic team, our race and equity lead team. Um, the work they've been doing for years. This is a summary of that work and also, um. Uh, providing next steps and specific strengths, weaknesses, and challenges and next steps. So here's our agenda for the day. And like, so we want to make sure we're defining how we will assess what does progress mean? And by end of year, and that drives our action planning and then respond to your questions. Um, as always, we want to show the alignment to our strategic planning. Clearly, equity lead team is. Um, it really touches on all the strategic plan goals, but especially of course equity empathy, valuing diverse cultures, languages, experience of the Techwell community. And the next slide just shows how the work from different groups comes together. We know our strategic plan guides everything. Our equity team, um, goals help drive, uh, the school improvement plan. Uh, for each of our schools and how they will modify that based on ongoing street data and other assessment data. Um. Excellent. Hey, I will just have each of our folks come up with is their slide to present.
Yeah.
Can you say your name? Could I say your name?
Yeah, my name's Nick. I, we can talk about elementary. Um, so our purposes and outcomes, uh, we want to align the district and around the vision of the race and equity team. We visualize that plans and policies throughout the district will include the vision and the approaches that we create. And will be used in restorative practices across district.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I'm Erin Herta. I work at Shaw Walter Middle School and I'm the district facilitator for recent equity. Uh, this is a. Brief but detailed history of the work. Um, it started. There was a diversity policy around two thousand and one, and in two thousand and fourteen, it started to be, uh, reworked. Um, that committee was a small group of employee. And the chief academic officer at the time, Dr. Wanda Billingley, and I was invited to join around two thousand and fourteen. Um, we worked on rewriting the policy draft and then two thousand and sixteen, it was adopted. Um, after a work session here with seventh and eighth graders who, um, requested that. The board rename the policy race and equity. Um, those students are now starting to graduate from college. I heard one of our first ones has graduated from college. Um. And then. Around, we went through quite a few chief academic officers. And so where you see two thousand and eighteen. Um, Emily Tran, who no longer works for the district, and I asked if we could be the facilitators for the district because there was too much rotation. We didn't want the work to be lost. Um, we did a work session with a group of community members, administrators, students, parents. Um, teachers to write procedures that are under still under construction in a lot of ways. Um. Two thousand and twenty, we began working with, uh, PSESD with a three-year plan. But currently we are still in our third, well, we're in our third year of it now. Um, what else is the other? We have twenty-one to twenty-four working with Dr. Roderzard and Dr. Knouse, um, sitting behind us. And we, oh, I think one of the most important things is when we got our building leads. Um, for a long time, it was just two volunteers. Trying to run community meetings. Pastor Proctor was at those community meetings for a long time. He was here at the meeting when we, uh, when Michelle Page and I presented as a support of the race and equity committee. Um. And we finally got the building leads when Dr. Herndon. Asked the all of the principals to put them in place, and that's been a huge movement and has made the work more community work and really spread out to. More, um, prominence in all of the buildings. Let me, I'm sorry.
All right, Michelle's slide.
Sorry.
And next slide will be showing progress in our key topic areas. Uh, Carolyn Salisbury.
Hey, um, my name is Carolyn Salisbury. I teach fourth grade at Cascade View. And, um, we have a lot of strengths here. Uh, I've, I've been doing work at Cascade View for the past four years or so. Um, and that is my phone, I think. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah. Um, anyways, uh, so, uh, as, uh, Erin mentioned, we now have recent equity leads are established at the site. So that's a big strength. Um. That we have, uh, teams written into the CBA now, and we have compensation for members now, which is awesome. Um, and, uh, the race and equity summit in August was a really good way to kick off the year and set the tone. Um, and the clear anti-racism vision, um, with intended outcomes for the entire district.
Thank you. Our next slide from Rachel Lavender. Come on up.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Rachel Lavender. Uh, my pronoun is they, and I am a para in the special ed department at Foster High School. Um, as far as like what our greatest challenges are right now, um, our group identified, uh, burnout and turnover as a significant challenge. Um, and from a race and equity standpoint, if the turnover is happening at the admin and district level. There are initiatives that are started, but they are never completed. Um, and there's a loss of institutional, uh, memory there. And from like when the staff is turning over, that means that new people don't know what are like norms and policies are. For example, like. What are our norms and policies around students using reclaimed slurs in the classroom? Um, and so we strongly endorse a goal of like reducing, uh, burnover, burnout and turnover. Um, another problem that we identified is a lack of accountability, um, when, uh, staff members are like. Consistently problematic and, um, there have been like every, like pretty much everyone in our working group was able to identify. Um, at least one colleague that had been a significant issue for a very long time and it never seems to change.
Thank you. And Kyla Crawford.
Yeah, to continue with those, uh, threats and challenges, I'm Kyla Crawford. I'm the librarian here at Thornback. So this is. My life right here. Um. Oh, yeah. Thank you for coming. Um, so continue that, uh, the lack of required professional development, uh, that's focused on anti-racism. We feel like is a really big threat, uh, to the work that we've been doing. Um, the anti-racism policy also needs updating. Um. Yes, the leads are a team, but not every department around the district is centering their their meetings on anti-racism. Um, and then the district budget situation, we're not really sure what is going to happen with that. So that's a huge threat and potential challenge.
Thank you. Carolyn's backup. Encore, do you hear your sound effects?
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, along with those, uh, threats and challenges, like we do see, um, some opportunities for growth this year. Um. Uh, the continued required professional development on anti-racism. Um, you know, board members bringing in new ideas, which is awesome and perspectives. Um, more clearly sharing elements of each school's tips and, uh, the use. Uh, as a guiding tool for the year. So, um, collaboratively, relapping them. And making sure they're infused with anti-racist goals. Um, and then, uh, district policy, uh, that requires district-wide racial equity plan. Um, including it should be implemented for the strategic plan. And, um, the equity plan should include restorative approaches and equity audits for school, all schools and buildings.
Thank you. And next we'll just be defining and measuring our progress we aim to be making. Jesse, come on out.
Hi, I'm Jesse Kuata. Um, I am a ML teacher and coach at Shaw Walter and the building lead there. Um, so indicators of success would be. Um, actionable goals that are related, directly related to racial equity in each school's SIP plans. Um, we would see data that is typically racially or other category like. Uh, predictive would not be racially predictive. Um, and we would. Hear and find that BIPOC staff and students would indicate a greater sense of belonging and safety, um. When compared to white stuff and students.
Well, thank you. And Madison. Want to.
And then I teach fourth grade at Cascade View. Um, so this is just a quick list of like our data points and ways that we're going to measure our success. So starting with Swiss data, which is, um. Kind of like lower ticket, uh. Behavior data, um, staff student, parent and community climate surveys. Uh, Skyward data, which is our, um, like bigger behavior reports, um, school progress towards SIP goals, first equity plans, and then equity audits as well.
You.
And now our next steps. Um, please, we'll see, we, uh, each of our groups has talked about this, um, following up on discussions between equities and school leaders. As Dr. Pedrosa referenced, we've had one joint meeting so far. We're planning more to continue going deeper in this. Of identifying specific actions to be taken by this team and further clarify the purpose of the team and outcomes we aim to see. And determining times and dates when representatives can facilitate the professional development at the schools. Um, and some back-to-school trainings. So that'd be one of the big steps we would take to make it just a normal part of everything you do that staff, um, work and collaboration. Rather than a standalone separate thing. Uh, and having the extra race and equity updates at monthly staff meetings. And, um, the building leadership teams to include a race and equity member to each school. So we want to make sure the voices in every part of decision-making. Any questions?
So, um. District and areas and possibly needs to be updated. So to me, since that's referring to the recent equity policy, yeah. Um, do you see, um, these people on these teams, um, at least doing a first shot at that, first draft of that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Very well positioned and they're the right mindset to be able to do that.
Have we one of the specific actions to be thinking? Okay, that sounds good.
It's something that we didn't talk about in our future planning around. They have some procedures wrapped out. They have done some more consideration. They already have some work already established. And so that's something that we talked about is using that group. And I also, I think, um, the team were meeting separately and the principals were meeting separately. And so we made the decision that the work was feeling disjointed and so we, it was stick to the alignment, right, about having equity. Work be centering our school improvement work and we were starting to, you know, our future plan. I, I think that should be, uh, so we need to make sure that our school leaders and our equity needs start coming together. Um, and we had that point meeting and it was really impactful. Actually, I felt it was really interesting. Um, we made some movement on some things. We also uncovered some barriers in other areas as well. Um, and so we are going to continue to have those meetings be combined because, um, it has to be. It has to be, it has to be all about leadership together, the working of the team and also about making sure that the goals are all aligned. We can't have just equity goals over here. It, it doesn't make sense to do that. So anyway, I, I probably spoke a bit about that, but I just want to say you guys are doing great work. And, um, I know that we have to continue to push on this. And the other thing is to be committed on what are the infrastructures we need to continue to put in place? Not just from a district standpoint, but also what we're talking about. So what do we do to invent professional development, right? Like, how do we? Carve time? How does that be part of our regular check-in? It shouldn't be a side thing. It shouldn't be an equity day. It should be part of our general work. And so that's something that we all agree to, but then how do we make that happen? Um, so through our calendaring, through all of those things. So we're trying to figure out that piece, how to embed the work. Into everything we do, but we also recognize that the general racism doesn't go away. Uh, it's still here. Um, but we have to make sure that we do have, uh, equity needs oversight and support along the way because we do need those checks and balances too. Yeah, I know this is a bit of we, we've had a conversation around before, but there was a, um. I think it kind of blew my mind a little bit when there was a conversation around how biased it's just being talked about generally in in meetings, right? And the response I got was essentially, we don't have time. Um, and, you know, so I think about like. To me, that's an unacceptable response. Like, we don't have time to talk about the things that are actually getting in the way of us educating our students, right? And seeing everybody as cool human. And, um, so I said, and say, there's so much work to do to integrate. The race and equity work into all of the work that we're doing, right? Because, you know, it should, it should be something that is just. We live and breathe it, right? As the collective district, not just something that's done over here. So I think one of the questions I think I have for the group is. Um, particularly those that have been a part of this work for a while, are you seeing? Like, are you feeling a difference of the way that that we're moving in the level of integration for the research, for race and equity work? Um. Yeah. And, and I guess too, like, Dad, that if there are, you know, things that, in addition to like what, what you put up here, um, that we can do. Um, and need to be doing to continue to do that. Um. Yeah.
Now, I think one of the things that stands out to me was when we were listening to your reports. A lot of us had reactions, but where it feels, feels like we're hearing them for the first time. So that feels like it's still disjointed. Right? Because a lot of us can tell you why we should be assessing the students in Spanish, right? Um, and then we were talking to Eric, is it, is math given in Spanish for that already? So thinking about all of those different equity lenses that we have. They're not always being used all the time, even in these higher up kind of committees. So just thinking about like those things feel, that feels still disjointed. Um, but then I have a lot of things that still feel better. Like moving to me personally, that I feel like there was some progress and a less pushback. Um, particularly in, at Shaw Walter, I feel it, um, we're able to do a lot more work without grievances.
Yeah, which I think actually kind of leads into my next question around, um, the lack of accountability, right? And carrying on the expectations.
I don't know about that, but I don't, but I don't ever, somebody's taking them minutes. I don't want to leave that report and I'll address that. They just said there's been. The lack of accountability. I want to hear more about that. And what of it, I'm telling now, um. The. Code five is something, and I want to hear why it hasn't been taken. And what are we going to do about it? And I want to hear it in the next meeting. So somebody tell me something. If everybody can identify, and I hope you. Part of me hopes it's the same person, but if they all can identify different person. Then it won't matter if you upgrade the policy and procedure, because you're not going to enforce it.
What I guess in part.
And how do we get away with that?
And then part of going to that, I'm like, I'm curious is how much is this play of needing to speak to the union reps and putting this into it? Because it seems like, I know from a teacher's perspective, you know, once you're in, you're in, right? It's really hard to, you know, so is that being, um. Is that language being written into it so that that would be a way of then if we have to put them on a professional plan to be able to, instead of. Having someone leave and then we have to pay them for the rest of the year, you know, whatever that is, that's built into.
And I was hoping that was going to come in the response, because that was the reason my nature of my interview was open ended. Because I'm savvy enough to understand that, but I'm also savvy enough to know what's right is right and what's wrong is wrong. And not to mention, if we're at the stage of negotiating our next contract, then we're not going to. We're not going to go down that road. Uh, and, and more importantly. If I have staff in here who can identify several people. And it's been, it's been, I don't say addressed, identified. And it's been, it's been, I don't say addressed, identified and sent to appropriate measures. I have students in a room, in the building. Who are still being impacted by that, right? And for me. That matters more than, than your union tour. And we got, we got a whole bunch. I don't, I don't want to hear it next week. I don't want to hear it next meeting. Somebody unpack that for me now, please.
Sure. I mean, I, since I gave this, I'll just talk about my experience here. I've had two colleagues that have been problematic enough that I have gone to admin to report them. They were both eventually fired, but one of them, it took like a year and a half. And in the meantime, they were like continually retaliating against me and it was making it really hard to do my job. And in the other case, the other person was also fired, but it was like months later. And both of these people, the things they ultimately got fired for were like very egregious offenses. Like, like putting, there were, there were, you know, one of, one of the teachers like I know had like put hands on somebody at some point and. Another, like the teacher, the other teacher, like what ended up happening was some like. I, what I heard what happened was that some students lynched a baby doll and hung it in the classroom and the teacher left it there for days. And that like it shouldn't, it should never have gotten to that point in either of those situations.
So I also understand with the collective bargaining, their processes and procedures. So I also know that sometimes. That happens in prior. And you may not know that steps are being taken and there's a, there's a unique balance of. Admin and executive working that out, but I think we have to. Figure out a way to let. People know that we actually are addressing it. But at the same time, if I was a union employee and you had a grievance and I was on PIP, I wouldn't want all my colleagues to know what my PIP was. Is that, that affair successful? But at the same time, I'm, I'm, I'm really taken aback. Because if we don't do that right. The morale of staff. And the, the confidence of the students. Are impacted. So I'm not going to just assume that. Stuff wasn't done, but clearly it wasn't done in a way that everybody felt like their voice was heard. The name was addressed and the students were kept safe. So I, I'd like to, you know, go ahead.
No, it was just because they ended there wasn't ongoing harm. And I think this was actually the board, we. Asked for some revisions, though I, I think it could be a lot more revisions to. The, the procedure around how we respond to grievances, because I think there's a lot more work that we need to do around how we're actually caring and tending to. The individual who put forth the agreements, because otherwise, right, unless you, thank you for sharing your experience. But as you shared, like you were the continued recipient of retaliation, right? And we was your retaliation policy and yet. There are, there seem to be very. There seem to be plenty of instances for retaliation. It's just okay. And I, you know, I don't think that's. Unique to our district. I think that's just an unfortunate, like. Byproduct of our world right now. And at the same time, I think we have the opportunity and the strong leadership to say, that's not who we're going to be anymore. And, you know, whether that's, you know, moving through some processes quicker. I don't know. We do have to figure out ways to protect everyone involved. And I think there has to be. So I was going to say, one of the things we talked about was the stability policy, for example, right? So that came up in conversation in our meeting. And so I said, well, let's have that be the first policy they review. Right? If there's some impacts that are happening. So for example, we can strengthen the policy by saying in these instances, for example, racial, whatever. We can say we can be more thoughtful about what is our response and what is the action step. But we have to be mindful of what you all said. Right? There are processes, there's due processes, there's individual rights, all of that. But we did ask, one of the first policies for them to look at is if they don't feel that the policy, and I know there's been changes, but if they put their eyes on it from an equity lens. And that high racist lens, then that could be something that maybe a couple of steps in the procedures or we could change a few things. So make sure that we are, and it may not be perfect still, we have to acknowledge that. But we have to be able to. Apply our best thinking and obviously have a more collective voice on that.
And the objective is to get the best.
Yeah.
Right outcome.
Absolutely.
And, and let's be clear, it's not always someone getting fired.
No, it's not.
It could be someone getting better, right? And, and in doing that, we're circling the lines around reinforcing the expectation and order by. In a professional.
Yeah.
Equitable way. But. If we're not going to do it, if we're not going to enforce it, then all the work above brings in what I have.
That's true.
And there'll be some accountability for the folks who are stupid, over exercising that procedure. Now you. May get. You may get rebuffed by information you aren't privy to. Like you have, I, if I, I'm talking for years, I wouldn't want my principal. Telling my department colleagues. That stuff. But I do need to know, I don't want my department here to somebody say, yeah, we're all it. And here's what you can expect.
Yeah. And that's kind of part of what I was gonna. Mention is that there's. One for the accountability, there's. Not entirely a procedure. And there's not entirely a procedure for, or, or I should say metrics. To like. Figure out where, where different harms fall, right? There's no metrics for that. There's no procedure for accountability for that. And recourse for it. And then no procedures for when somebody's harmed. I know that that process had gotten started a few years ago. And I'm not really sure where that work lies now, but I think it's twofold because like you're saying. Somebody could be walking around harmed on a regular basis and not know. That that is being handled behind closed doors, but also there's nothing to support them in the work environment for, for a kid going to school every day. And so we need to hold both and there's no procedure for either.
And I think that transcends the race and equity lens. Someone sexually assaulted in the building. The victim needs to know that the people they are trusted is on it. Same time, if I'm walking in the halls and I see the perpetrator and the perpetrator is going on as if unscathed, that does a whole lot of damage to the psyche to the. I mean, you, you, it don't even have to be that deep, you know, but at the same time, we got to figure that out because it does. You're talking about metrics. It does immeasurable harm that we can't touch, like, because the scars, you can see a broken arm, but you can't see. I saw your hands up, Eric.
I was just going to say to connect to that, because kind of brought in students, that students have reported they have no safe way to report harms. And that they have been looking for accountability for a very long time. They've brought it up. Many occasions, like students who have graduated from their master's program are, have sat on the board, Ikua. She sat on the board. She asked where there could be accountability for students to report things and know that something happened and we're still waiting for them to.
So, and I also wanted to acknowledge. That I am proud. That this task force's team has moved the discussion beyond awareness. And we have to continue to move beyond awareness too. And passive. Too. Okay. So this mountain may be. Bigger, but we've got to keep climbing. We've got to keep digging and we got to, we have to keep pushing. Toward the best. Possible district we can be. And it requires all hand on deck. And I'm here for the smoke. Anybody who has pushed back on Tuck, Tuckler School District. Being the best it could be, particularly in this area. Because it has ripple effect. And I'm here. But really, because that's the students, we don't have time to do three or four different drafts. What, what year is that? You've got another year with. Right? So I'm, I'm. I'm here for, for the work, for all of our slaves and coming up with. So many people looking for a quick fix, the, the solution. The problem is too complex for quick fixes. But if we're all vested in moving that in forward. Then we're also got, we also have skin in the game. And so we become less tolerant. To where our bridges, we're all in. Then those who want to move this forward. Will be free to go with others. And I don't mean on those because it won't fit. And I don't mean some radical understanding, how do we get too much right? Just look at the, the charge. For the multilingual students or racial makeup or our district. So someone who is biased and. Then you probably should be in this district. Or. Someone who has curbs to say, hey, I've registered biases. That I want to outgrown. I'm here for that too.
I think that's why we have the mandatory PD as part of the challenges on there. It's because we need something that is required. Right now we offer, you know. Committee meetings that are. Open to the public, what is it, like voluntary, being able to come in and we don't get a lot of attendance. Because it's not.
It's a knockdown.
It's a knockdown. So we need it, we need it from every, we need the policy to.
And, and the, let's go over slaves and get to some stuff. I, I'm probably a little too busy for the awareness conversation. And I've gotten too old. And so. No, really, I'm really, I'm at the end of my life where I read in my eyes that so many of our professionals are younger. That doesn't mean I'm old and cranky. That means I know you grew up in a world where those biases are tolerated, so I'll bring them to the workplace. I, I mean, more than any part of please. No, we're not doing that. And we want to hold each other accountable for what's. But I'm here. You got all my contact.
Can I just thank you too for sharing, what I really wanted to share that threats. Yeah, because I feel like that is the only way we can move forward is really understand what the threats are and what the challenges are.
And the same. Personnel, super detecting all staff from retaliation. So I have a problem with that as well. We do something like that.
Part of our whole thread is also the awareness and acceptance that we have to. Persevere through discomfort. It's too easy for people to say, oh, I don't, I don't like your topic. Doesn't matter if you like it, we have to address it.
Yeah. And that's for everybody, but we'll, they have little impact.
Yes.
I'm here for it.
I had a question about one of the threats. You guys mentioned that there was loss progress in the M D due to staff turnover rates and I was wondering. If there was like a way to actively document successes and policies in a way that newcomers can build off of and just be aware of.
Yeah, I, I think adding it to our staff meeting, so a lot of the, the opportunities that we have, adding. Adding to staff meetings, updating the policy regularly, coming up with procedures that are long lasting, all of those things will feed into. People being onboarded and being able to follow and pick up work. I would say though, that the new hire orientation, it does not include administrator. So the onboarding has to come somewhere. There is a race and equity component for two hours. It's the first thing the hires do over here, but. I don't know what the administrators get when they are onboarded at all the level.
Yes, so. I'm, I'm just going to jump through. The next slide is just kind of an agenda of what I'm going to go through, what the slides entail. So if we go to the next slide, I just wanted to point out, you've seen this, this is included in our monthly financial reports. But I wanted to bring this forth again to show the enrollment and what's been happening over time. Obviously with COVID, we had a real big drop in enrollment. And this year, we're actually, believe it or not, month over month, seeing increases to enrollment. So. Even as far as February, we are still getting additional kids, which is, which is good for us. But still doesn't meet the needs of state funding and fully funded education in the state of Washington. So next slide, please. So it's always easy to look backwards. So this is just showing a little bit of a backwards look. The reason why I brought forth the 2022, 23. Kind of high level forecast is because I wanted you to see. Kind of when this started was prior to 22, 23. So when the budget was built for 22, 23, they, there was an anticipated beginning fund balance of 3.5 million. So this is in millions. And we didn't meet that target. We actually came in under that target and that's really what started that slide for 22, 23. On top of that, revenues were projected higher than what came in. And then expenditures, although they were not as high as what was anticipated, it brought forth because we exceeded our revenues. And so you'll see here, as we ended the fiscal year, we ended in a negative fund balance, which we're all quite aware of at this point. So let's bring that forward to 23, 24, current year. The beginning fund balance was projected at 600,000. Obviously, we came in well below that at a negative 700,000. And again, revenues and expenditures. Were shown as equal here, but as we've been going through and reanalyzing the information that we've got. We're actually anticipating less revenue than what's been projected in the initial budget. And we are going to expend more than what the budget allocation is. So we're projected to spend 65.2 million. That leaves us with a negative ending fund balance of about 3.5 million. I do want to point out that this is projection. We're still working through and trying to finalize these numbers. And as I presented in our work session. That number could be as high as 4.3 million. So we're, there, this is still a range. So, so I'm showing here 3.5, but we could move up to 4.3 million. So I just want to make sure that we're aware of that. If you move to the next slide, this is the more detailed granular view. I can also provide this to you in an Excel worksheet, but this is the granular detail. The reason why it's shown this way is because this is shown by program or required by the state to report our revenues and expenditures at a programmatic level. This is dictated to us by the state of Washington. So this is shown a little bit of a historical reference. The first two columns are the historical reference. The highlighted column is our projection and then the, the column to the right of that is the 23, 24 budget that was passed. And is what is in our system currently. So this first page is showing the revenues. And you can see at a granular level, which ties back to that 62.3 million dollars that we're anticipating to receive in revenues for this fiscal year. The next page is.
And I'm looking at this, what this says is that. The PDA revenue is actually up.
Yes. Yes, because we actually have more students than what we budgeted.
Is the good news.
It is the good.
The bad news is that for the categoricals. They're asking a week in my like probably question, basically, how do you? How do we, how do we overspend categoricals? And I don't know if I got that an hour ago.
I'll do it on my expenditure side. But I, on this revenue side too, I want to also point out that there was one point three million dollars that was budgeted as an operating transfer in from other funds. I don't know what that is. I'm still trying to dig into that, but I don't believe that's a true. Projection. Um, I don't know if that was an anticipation related to some of the cash. Um, but that that's not a uh operating, it's not a revenue for us. And so I don't know if it was just a budget placeholder. Um, so I'm still trying to do some of that research. So right now it's projected at zero because um I don't know what it is. So.
A negative on the revenue is the same as a positive on the expenditure.
Exactly.
Didn't make any sense, okay.
Um, so then if you move to the expenditure side, it's a similar um similar spreadsheet. Um, again. Uh, we are projecting sixty-five point one million. Uh, the budget is showing sixty-three point six or close to sixty-three point seven. Um, the question has come up about categoricals. Um, typically speaking. Um, even though it shows categoricals for special education, transportation. Um, E cap is showing a little bit higher. Um, the state does not fully fund those areas. E cap is a little bit different, but especially transportation and special education. We know and we've been trying to work with the legislature to provide ample funding in those two specific sources. Um, obviously is not coming through, but we spend more. It costs more to run special education and transportation than we get funding. Um, and it is not unique to Tuckroll, the school district. It is a statewide issue in both of those categories.
So I understand that was, but you know, for example, five hundred seventy thousand over on S R three. How does that happen? I mean, S R dollars. We, I could be spending more than we're allocated for S dollars.
Uh, no, so that is not, that is, that is showing the difference between what is projected and what the budget is for those two areas. But if you look at the uh revenue side, we um we will not overspend in S R. So if you were to compare, put those two side by side and look at the S R revenue versus the S R expenditures, we will not be overspending. Um, our S R categories. This, this positive negative is the difference between the expenditure budget and the projected budget.
But, you know, so taking them on the extra the door killers. So we budget ninety-sixty-eight and then we're gonna spend nine eighty-eight. I mean, extra critical is we should have a pretty good idea of. What those expenditures are gonna be, and we're. You know, off, I often move it out, took our own.
Right, I, as we were digging through the budget, we noticed that we're, there were some items uh that probably should have been in the budget that weren't. That that should have been budgeted, that weren't budgeted. As we've been analyzing um like extra cost, extra time, things of that nature. Uh, they just weren't often in the budget in some of these categories.
So then the question, you know, becomes, yeah, it's my question of internal control. So. You know, who's responsible for those budgets? And then why are they letting it go? I mean. Okay, it should have been, but it wasn't done.
Right.
So therefore, somebody watching that should should. The red flags should be going out that somebody's starting to overspend that, even if it quote should have been. You know, I, that's my, that's kind of a basic question about the whole internal controls and. Because, you know, from the auditor comes in and and keep giving us these clean audits, you know, they're supposed to be looking for internal control problems. And it sounds like we have an internal control problem with a lot of these, which, you know, hasn't been fixed. I mean, immediately when you guys came in, you said, okay. You know, we're not, nobody down low is gonna get dispensed out unless we've seen it.
Right.
But I'm just, I'm just curious, how did we get, you know, give me how we got in that situation?
And I honestly don't know because I've, you know, been employed here for less than two months now. And so I'm still trying to uncover, um, everything's that's going on. So it's hard for me to know because I wasn't in the district. I don't know what the past history was and what that looked like. Um, and because of turnover, I think that's going to be really, really hard to uncover at this point. All I know is that moving forward. Um, obviously, we've instituted additional internal controls. Um, and as we're looking and analyzing budgets for next year, uh, we're making sure that we're. You know, turning over every rock, stone and pebble uh to make sure that the costs are reflected accurately and that we're actually getting to a zero. Budget, um, zero fund balance, so not negative, um, zero or higher i- is our goal. Um, and so that is our, the work that we're doing.
I think it's curious. So I know, because I was questioning previously about. You know, we're, what's she getting? The the ESP was supposed to be in your helping this next year, that I'm aware of. So and just, it just kind of blows my mind that we could let this, let this thing get out of, that part out of the control without red flags going on. And I, and I understand, you know, the current control's slapping it on, but. The other question is, is that really an ongoing, I mean. Is it re- is it reasonable for you to be responsible for every single budget? I don't, I don't know, maybe it isn't small district, or do we need to over time? You know, educate people how to, you know, control.
Well, obviously, you need to educate people. I mentioned this last time, I think the last meeting we had. Um. You know, we put the internal controls in place and then you still find out. You know, and you put them in those updates and you make sure you have, you know, training people. But as you all know, right, when you have, you know, all of us who have had, you know. Controlled budgets and um have, you know, kids and whatever, check what's all these things. Um. Getting consistency and fidelity to that training takes time, right? It just takes time. And um, we, so, you know. Right now, the way the budgets are, you have every department leader and you have a school-based leader. Um, and so the minute we find something, we're like, oh, course correction. And so. Um, we'll give the training as much as we can, uh, but then it's again, it's the accountability part, right? So you put in place what the expectation is, this is what we're gonna be doing moving forward. But it still takes some people um time to learn new how to, or new how to way of thinking or being or doing. Um, in any of these situations. And so I will say, for the most part, most people have been really following upon that. Um, but then every once in a while, you know, something will happen, like oops, we have to yank it back and go, okay, we need to remind. We need to do this, or we need to say, stop. Which is the hardest thing to do. To say stop to somebody and say, we cannot, we cannot do this anymore.
Right.
Right? And that's the hardest, that's the hard part, because people don't like, you know.
Right.
It's very challenging.
Right.
But it sounds like that's our, you know, the problem, yeah, this is another problem that turns away out of the Champions program. Now it's.
Yeah.
Ran out of control and nobody seemed to be raising the red flags.
No, we did raise the red flags, yeah, but yeah, it is a great time to actually uh. Chief Rebecca, if you, you can step in and share a little bit about that, if you're aware of components.
Sure. Well, my understanding of a couple of concerns are out there. One, I think, uh, misunderstanding by some is thinking the program is done. It isn't, it continues the rest of the year. It's just a matter of, we have run out of money to fund it as a automatic free participation. So that's when we've seen that. Even ongoing meetings with the uh providers. That we had, the budget was about twenty-five thousand a month to get us through the year, probably some for summer school. Um, but it's, bills have been thirty to fifty-seven thousand. Per month, so way over. And it's not over, they're not. Inventing costs, they're bringing more kids in. So we had based the budget on the number of kids. That we could afford for service within the original Twenty First Century Grant, but they have just brought more kids in. Good service, lower budget.
But the question is. Where was our internal control? As soon as they started bringing more than the allowable, it's in boom, stop.
So I also say one thing on that was uh uh when Graywater came. He noticed the invoicing, right, we had the invoices, they were screwed, and that was in the fall. Uh, you quickly uh met with the leaders. And the principals and said, stop. This is an example of, he said, we need this to stop, we need this to be reduced. This is all the money we have, this is all we have until June. We stated what our concerns were. You talked about what the options were, that we might have to end this sooner. Um, or can we get this reduced now? Um, uh, we actually met with our legal team to review the MOU to, so that we could know what we could do. And that was all communicated. And then when we saw the invoices coming in and the, uh, if it wasn't stopping. Then that's, we had to make a good decision and course correct whatever. So I will say that we did. Uh, in good faith, uh, but, and I will say that uh. We remain with them continuously and talked about all the options and it didn't change habits of practice. And we had to make an internal decision about whether we're gonna go another two hundred fifty thousand dollars in debt by June. Or, which we can afford to do, or they oft come up with an alternative solution, especially for our families that really need a free. Service um after school and before school. So we came, they worked together with the principals and champions and dropped the letter. Um, and wanted to make sure that we got that out to families. And so that they would have time to uh work with them to get uh alternative.
Yes.
For them, it would be within their own system or through an alternative system. And I think just kind of one thing I'll, I'll speak to and I wanna just name, I'm probably one of the biggest advocates for high quality after school care. That's literally the field that I've worked in. Um, uh. And, you know, the reality is, is this was funny about the Twenty First Century Grant. We no longer have the Twenty First Century Grant. Um, and, you know, there, I I firmly believe that we have amazing. Community organizations, nonprofit entities. That are uh that want to help support providing affordable health childcare for um our youth. And I do not believe that it should follow the, the burden of the financial impact should follow the school district. Um, we are there to ensure that we could provide every resource that we have to allow those folks to be in our spaces. But for us to pay, um, it feels, uh, you know, when we think about like what is within our scope as an educational entity. It's yes to support the overall holistic experience of young people and we're really in charge of what's happening between. Uh, you know, when young people are, you know, between the bells, right? Um, and so, you know, I, I think that it was amazing that we were able to do that for a while. Uh, and eventually we might be able to reapply for the Twenty First Century Grant if they um open it again. Um, go through, have another cohort, but right now that is not the case. And um, we're not saying that we are not prioritizing. Before and after school care and we don't understand the value. Um, and I think the burden of the, of the financial component should not necessarily fall on the school district itself.
One thing I worked real closely with their director throughout this last several weeks to get to this point. Um, she had said that she and her team are um have a knowledge of the, of some different government subsidies that will pay for childcare. And they believe that many of our families will be eligible. So they've been meeting since may, for maybe a week now. Uh, with parents as they come to pick up their children at the end of the program each day to talk to them about if they're interested, kind of explain. You know, the, the program will keep going if they, you know, either qualify for subsidy. Or even like partial subsidy, or if they can pay, if their income's too high, they would need to pay. And they're, have told me that they. Um, they believe, I didn't get the exact dollar amount, but their tuition would be um. Significantly lower than what they've seen for other uh childcare services. I don't know, I don't know the dollar amount attached to that, but. Um, I know they, I said, what are some examples? They said increments of between, some families will qualify for no cost. Some will qualify for like a hundred fifty a month, maybe two fifty. Um, I think, so I haven't heard of the chart I initially saw, it didn't go past that. I don't know how far it goes, but it showed. Um, so to me, that sounded. Free is better when money is plentiful, but when it's not, that's seems like.
Relies on funded government entities, right, that actually are there to help support.
Exactly.
Childcare.
Yes.
And just a reminder, that's Champions is still in our schools, that's still be here till the end of the year. Um, and, and I, and as a parent, as a working mom, I know this is really hard, so.
Yeah.
Um, I, you know, I get that, that this is challenging um for our families. And but at the same time, it is not. Responsible of us to accrue a two hundred fifty thousand debt on top of the debt we currently have.
So we're talking about further accountability, so it sounds like there's also an accountability issue within our own musicians keeping, keeping the budget.
Yeah.
And then, because, you know, if we had known early, then we could have potentially got hunted around and find some other better solutions. Other than just going, you know, two hundred fifty thousand dollars underwater and.
But we found out in the ball.
Yeah.
And so, and then Scott was on it. So. Uh, I think, uh, but at the end of the day, you have to have, I would say, you can give their expectation that you have, everyone has to work together.
Right.
And in a coordinated way. And um, if, if you can't get that, then still we have to make smart decisions, which is really unfortunate. It puts us in a really tough spot, and I don't think any of us want to be here, for sure.
Yes, the other one, the extent of doing that was uh might be desperate to grow. But what is that one? It's kind of a lot of seventy-nine.
Yes.
Give any idea why that one's three hundred thousand over?
Uh, again, I, I, these are estimates as, as of this time, based on some work that we're doing. Um. So I need to dig into that a little bit more, but I'll, I'll start that and look at that. And then maybe we can provide you that information in a, in a. Weekly report as far as why. Um, some of these are, are so off of projections.
Yeah, it just sounds to me like, you know, we just, I know, as I said, we just have some. Accountability internal control problems.
Yeah.
About getting these, you know, getting these before they become, you know, problems.
Okay, before we be too far, I just wanna, I wanna say my. As far as after school programs, they're essential. And so I. Um, I know from our kids going through it that there's no way in my life that I could go into work after school programs like that. And so I think, yes, the school district needs to have something provided here that's gonna work for our families, hands down. So we're in a budget crisis, that sucks. If we're in a better place, will we keep them? I don't know. You know, how that, how that, I mean, the reality of it, how it works, right? But the thing is, is we thought we had money, we didn't. And now we're in a place, now we're not serving families. And that's what we're always talking about, right, how to serve our families. So then how are we going to then? What to, what's about to progress, said, when you have a group here is, I wanna know now. What are we gonna do with the kids now, the parents that are working? And that now, how are they gonna, they gotta go to your job. It, I just, it doesn't make sense. You know what I mean? I remember just the car breaking down. I mean, we couldn't pay insurance, because you gotta get your car fixed, right? And so then our families now have to figure out things. So I wanna know what we're doing as a district. And then I heard some things that were talking about negotiating, people don't have a hundred fifty bucks. Uh, I mean, that sounds great, we're making a hundred thousand bucks a year, you have PhD and put your name in the doctor or something. But regular people don't have the insurance. So what are we doing now? What is the district doing now? What's our emergency plan to surround our families now? And where are we looking here to?
So we do have plans for the summer. Um, I'm having, having a meeting with the Boys and Girls Club. Um, but the plan that we have right now is to work with the current families. I don't know the number of families that don't qualify. For that program, so that's something we have to find out from Champions, because I'm doing that work right now. So maybe that's something we need to talk to, but I, so, Joe, the money, I don't know what the plan is because at this time. We're gonna be, the projections are gonna be over budget. And if this is a priority, then, then I have, we have to do something right now. To stop spending something else or move Twenty First Century Grants over. I don't know what the answer is, because currently we have Innovations. That receives Twenty First Century, so we have the program, we're receiving the grant. So we have Innovation, so that could be something that we can do. And then also All-Stars in the middle school. So this is affecting yet elementary school, but Innovations is the only other program that's just me. I believe that's the only other, right?
Um, the only other program um that is funded by Twenty First Century Grant is after school, starts at the middle school. And then Champions all through the elementaries. And then BURB is a competitor that analyzes the data, see if we're seeing um student benefit. From having been in the program. Um, so together that comes out to five hundred thousand, and Twenty First Century Grant is not funded after this year. So Innovations, we have, um, another fun source for that, but that's also. High, high hundred, sixty thousand.
My, my only order is because people sign up at the beginning of the year. There was people that were brought in later, right? And there has to be, there's a qualification of which they got to go into the after school program, some based on these and some. And there has to be, there's a qualification of which they got to go into the after school program, some based on these and some like our, the nice. Person that wrote in the letter here, a school teacher that's that's already here, apparently, I mean, maybe a different salary bracket than somebody who's, you know. Uh, over, over here, so if we can, if we can figure that out, which I think should be pretty straightforward of of who the services need. And then see what the money's there, is this still a possibility, or is there a way to to make there? I just can't imagine having three weeks to get out of life. Totally, all my money's, everything else, and my job, and and your boss, it just, I just can't imagine that. What that does to real people, ripens. So I wanna figure out how do we. How do we solution and how do, like, even, and I'm talking about like, is there a person, a point of contact at each school? Are we gonna meet with each family, we're gonna look at Boys and Girls Club, can't get them in by summer, can we get the kids over to them? Can, I mean. I'm talking about really strategizing and trying to move to make this work until we have a plan in place, because I do, I do expect. Schools to help the family that are in here and have after school, before school programs. Breakfast, lunch, and snack is super important for our kids back there. I mean, there has to be some, there has to be something here.
So I'm not disagreeing on the value, but I do disagree a little bit on where the, like, whose responsibility it is. Again, we are tasked with fund with uh, high, high quality education, right? Am I saying that that high quality, amazing after school programs is not something that supports that? Sure. However, we can hardly fund right now and pay for what we need to do to get through the school day, right? And if that is ultimately what we are responsible for, the school day, again, and I'm not saying that. This means we don't care about helping the families that need it. It it doesn't, it doesn't mean, but. But is it our responsibility to fully fund? I don't think so.
But is there other, what I heard was, I wanna be clear, is I heard there are other programs being funded, still. What I'm asking is, are we able to look at that and get creative with the families? Uh, you said a hundred and fifty families, I'm sure not. I'm not, I shouldn't say I'm sure. I would be curious to see if those hundred fifty families, where the greatest needs are. Are we able to find monies to help the specific families that we're gonna target? And I'm not sure if that is, I'll let professionals figure that out better, but there's a group of those individuals that that's a high need there.
But I also think if. I also think this crucible budget crunch.
I know.
Forces. The uh, there are agencies to reassess. If the cash is flowing, agencies say, we can help with this, help with this, this, that's the place. At certain point, you have a conversation, and the grant for that is gone. Now I heard you say they began to look at, the agency began to bring other grants, because it's important to them. To provide services, particularly for families that are already in that debt. Uh, so, both can be true. Well, the truth of the matter is, we're debitized. For services from their value. Right, and these, these, these enhance our ability to increase uh, efficacy here. But at the same time, um, we've gotta be able to, hey, that isn't just our problem. That might be champions' challenge, because if they're gonna be in our district, we need to find some more creative ways to resource it. Because we don't have the grant. That's just a hard fact. But I feel they are aware of it now, and they're circling the wagons. I just know we're X millions of dollars of a budget, and so even if we get to zero. That's, that's not gonna be the first. Thing we're gonna be able to do. So both are true. Um, but again, as as being in a part of those nonprofits, you you get to the huddle and say, hey. Here's what we're all for. So did I hear you, um, Dr. Rose is saying that? We have them till June?
We have champions until June. They're gonna be still in our schools, and I also heard what you shared earlier was that they have a plan, they think that most of the families. Will be covered by the free subsidies.
Or yeah, pretty close.
It was your concern, it's not completely out of really caliber, they're not there, and that's wrong. But I also think we need to have that conversation with them before. Because even as we get to zero, we gotta reassess how we're gonna partner. This is very important. Well, we gotta get some creative, other creative ways. And their executives will be in the same mind as us. But when you're under a roller coaster, that thing hits that left turn, everybody in that car gets close to each other. You figure it out.
And what else, when you say free subsidies though, is there a dollar amount attached to that? Of what families are like, you know, having to pay?
So it's all through DS, um, through DCYF, so it's the, it's what providers can get if they're licensed, um, entity. So basically, a family where apply for um, through DCYF for um, childcare. Uh, funding, um, and they were getting award letter saying how much you get our cares funded um, for the month. Um, of the year, um, and then the entity gets to claim those dollars should be get. Um, usually, uh, not always, but usually there is some um, co-pay related, um, so like a family might need to be fifty dollars. Um, it's going, it's all income based. Um, I do know that DSHS, sorry, DCYF. Uh, used to be DSHS, um, like, for instance, for our uh, you know, people who are, um, they can even show students. Uh, anyone that is homeless will automatically get full DCYF coverage. So there are, if we think about again, like. For students that, you know, would benefit even more from those programs, though, of course, we've been thinking about the whole family movement, as you said. Um, you know, so it it originally went from zero dollars, I mean, I don't often see a zero dollar co-pay for it, it exists for sure. Um, up to sometimes, um, you know, one hundred fifty um, dollars for the co-pay, um, which then I think is. Working with an entity that then have a scholarship program, um, which is one of the reasons why I uh, recommended. Um, the Boys and Girls Club, because I know that they both have licensing, so they can use, they can pull that DCYF. So for, as well as um, the amount of just general fundraising and grant accruals that they do. So that they can really lower the cost as much as possible for families that need it.
So I'm just gonna spitball here, so. We send a letter out to the parents. Do we have staff in place? I'm assuming you have staff in place that are are working with each families that are helping them fill out this application that you're talking.
Yeah, the champion staff.
Perfect. So then when that comes back and there's that award, so it's fifty dollars, a hundred fifty dollars a month. I want to think about us targeting that knowledge.
I don't think we can. I think the family is responsible for paying for it as a part of their uh, com- uh, as a part of.
And re- remember, Charlie, most of the families that would be applying for that probably are already in the DCYF system. Um, so, so, well, because it's needed, exactly, so. True, yeah, uh. And and or have other need, if they're not already in that system. This may be important, we get the other families that if they're at that level, so just. Then one would be care of the church and then the champion invoices. People on their client list to the DCYF monthly, and then get that directly, that has nothing to do with the school district. At that point, we're providing space.
Yes.
For them to run a program that helps meet a mutual need for our students and their clients and their family. We become outside of the world once they become private contractors with families. But it also is a creative way to still have that need at, at off of our budget. Which helps us get to that zero. If that need is being met, and the nonprofit agency is figuring out revenue streams to meet that need. Because there are some nonprofits who will come, hey, we got this great program, mentoring program, kinda like Project Mister. We wanna work with your kids, can you get some space? They've already got it, man, they already got it. Fight it, for the rest of it. So it, it more from us being granted for that service to, hey, we wanna work with you. My money is exhausted, what's it look like? But that helps your assignment of getting to that zero.
Another kind of wild card situation, which I think still tracking down is. So in last year's budget, at the state, Representative Burkes out, put in there. A hundred forty eight thousand dollars to the local school district practical program. And I guess we haven't yet been able to find where that money is. Um, and so, anyway, that's another kind of wild card in here.
So we never got.
And that's just a question mark, and she's.
Yeah, I was, I've been researching it a little bit, and I'm not able to find a hundred forty eight thousand dollar um, allocation.
Yeah.
Or state grants.
Yeah.
You you indicated it wasn't federal, I looked in federal as well, I didn't see anything in federal, so.
I can, I can dig it up in last year's budget, I'll show you exact line item, and then it may be. Unfortunately, you said that nobody on our side actually went to OSPI again.
Yeah, I even looked at the, right, well, I looked at the grant or um. Kind of all of the grants that were out there that just kind of show up, that sometimes we qualify for. The ones that we don't, we don't apply for.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't even see anything in.
Sure, really interesting grant, because it was literally a budget provides a, specifically, if this happens, not very often.
Right.
Specifically for the Temple of the School District, Representative Burkes got shipped into the. So I'm not sure, I don't even know how it gets distributed, whether it goes to the grant program or some other.
Right.
Program, so anyway, I'll I'll look at it, I know, so you can actually have. And then you can go, yeah.
Okay.
So anyway.
Sounds good.
So, Dr. Rosa, I can trust today that you're working with parents, man.
Yeah.
With them right at at there and that the staff that has direct contact we're done, because today is February five. Exactly, I wish before we have to start.
When, when did that start?
The free, the free part, okay, we're doing, yeah.
Yeah.
So, Mark, okay, so what I'm gonna ask Scott to do, is to check in with that, because what I think I'm hearing you say. Is we think that the plan for our most, our families with the biggest need, their needs are gonna get met. Um, what we're hearing is uh, families that maybe have a higher income, specifically, that's what you're concerned about. I don't know if we can find that grant, that'd be helpful, that's something we can do to help subsidize some of this, but. Um, we also have other programs and grants too, but we can talk about, we can't pay for, I I don't know if we can pay for everything, but we can actually maybe. Help provide some extra funding to the program to support some of the new spots. Um, because I I, you know, if, I think we have to do something, but I I think you said that the, well, I heard you say. That most of the families can't, so what I'm hearing you say is you want us to make sure that any family that isn't covered. In this, that we actually follow up and come up with a plan for them.
It just sounds like we made a contract at the beginning of the year, families were counting on it, and then it kinda got pulled out. And so what I wanna do is make sure that we're supporting them, you know what I mean, and trusting that.
Yeah.
You know, that's what we're doing in this time, you know, for it, so I'm gonna make sure that that's being looked at and followed through.
So I, we can get the list up, the director relating to the families that. Qualified at too high of a level.
Mm-hmm.
But I also don't, I don't have the money right now, so I think that that was gonna be really clear, we don't have the money. And um, so we have to understand, maybe that somebody can ship them to another program that there's space. For for them to Boys and Girls Club, there's things we can do. This would have been an example of where, you know, I think it would have actually been wise to partner with them, go with, that says, you know, let's push everybody. To apply for the, for the DCYF, and then we're gonna use our twenty first century grant funding to pay for those young people that don't. So to me, it in, you know, that was actually a recommendation that I gave at some point, but it was just like, you know, uh. Not fully managing a resource that we had and leveraging the uh, entity's um, ability. As a licensed provider to tap into their funding as well. We didn't do that, so then we got in a situation where we were paying full price for every single student. That couldn't qualify for all that other stuff, um, something strange, so.
One thing I can do, just to personally be more involved, I can be there sometimes after school, the different schools. When parents do come pick up their kids, and I could just observe how the champion staff is interacting with parents, how they're helping them. Um, you engage if they're willing to apply, helping them apply, uh, I can make sure I hit all three schools. And that would help, I can actually, you know, in, um, you know, first degree of separation, report on what I'm seeing. And I I do talk with Trish Fraser, the director, frequently, um, because she knows how important this is to us and the families that she's. I I do believe she's, and her staff are trying their best to get as many people qualified for the greatest amount of subsidy that they can. But this is one way I could go personally, um, verify.
That'd be awesome.
Okay.
Um, I did ask her yesterday, are you okay?
Um, so I I do wanna let you know that even though this is a projection, the projection will be updated and presented to you every month moving forward. Um, we are continuing to review and analyze, so uh, meeting with staff. Looking at all of the grants to make sure that we maximize the grants and we are spending to the fullest extent, so analyzing costs. Is something looking like it's not going to be fully spent, identifying BEA costs that we can move over to that grant, um. And so, uh, it's, it will be a lot of work over the next six months to make sure that we are lining everything up. And and doing as much as we can to reduce that negative fund balance. I'm also looking at some of our general fund costs that are currently in the um. Obviously, in the general fund, but what is it that we could potentially move over to the capital projects tech levy? Uh, we do have um, probably certain positions, um, we've been analyzing. Uh, that could move over to the tech levy that legitimately can be charged. Um, and then also looking at maybe some of the um, material supplies, operating costs, um, that might be eligible as well. That are currently sitting in the general fund that we can move over. As long as we're meeting the rules of capital projects. Um, we'll be able to identify those and move those out as well. And then obviously, we've been talking about um, uh, when the former CFO, interim CFO came on board. Um, immediately instituted some of those internal controls. Um, some of our next steps may include um, a hiring freeze through the end of the year. We do know that there are certain positions that are absolutely critical that must be filled, but really looking at this as uh, with a lens of. Do we really need to fill this position? Um, and then analyzing and potentially ending some of our vendor contracts. Uh, before the end of the fiscal year, that maybe on this high of impact, um. So we we're looking at all of that as we continue this work. Um, my next steps, if you move to the next slide, obviously, I spoke about this already, uh, I'm working with OSPI in the ESD to redo or re. Um, evaluate and re-implement a twenty three, twenty four budget. Um, I will have to bring that forth to the board for approval, and my opinion completion is um, probably the March board meeting to. Um, have that all done and presented to you. Uh, moving into the twenty four, twenty five budget development, obviously, uh, with us being in binding conditions. We are required to bring our fund balance to zero. Um, on top of that, um, as we've uh, uh, spoken in the past, our SRA funding is ending. Um, which equates to about five point nine million dollars this year, so that grant is going away. The reason why that's important is because we do have staff positions, and we do have some contracts on SRA. So that funding goes away, um, and so that um, is something that we have to work with as well. Um, and our estimated, um, as I've already spoke, estimated ending fund balance is anywhere from three point five to point four, four point three projected. Um, ending negative, um. Fund balance. I'm providing this next slide, um, not to bring stress, but to point out. It's really important to point out, um, what it looks like if we choose to do nothing. Now, we've been tasked by OSPI through binding conditions to get to a zero fund balance, however. If we did nothing, and the fact that we're losing our SRA funds, the fact that we have a projected ending fund balance of about three point five million. As we move into twenty four, twenty five. Assuming a revenue growth of two percent, and assuming expenditure growth of three point two percent. Now, keep in mind, revenues and expenditures, that growth is never equal. Um, we would end our fund balance next year in twenty four, twenty five at about thirteen point two million, assuming we did nothing. You project that out to twenty five, twenty six, and that jumps up to twenty three point nine million. So I bring this forward to you to show the seriousness of where we are and what we're faced with. Um, as we move forward to having a balanced um, budget for twenty four, twenty five. Uh, next slide. We know that staff attrition will not get us to zero. Um, and so that means that there will be cuts to um, all levels. Um, and so that means that there will be cuts to um all levels of our staffing, our contracts and some of our programs. Um, and it's the only way we can get to a zero fund balance and begin building our reserves um as a requirement of uh good fiscal um accountability, but also because of the down conditions. So right now we are working on um our recommendations. Um, we've been considering uh board priorities and philosophies, reviewing our uh the union priorities. Um, also abiding and needing to abide by our collective bargaining agreement um and that with those timelines. Um, so all of the saying that these will drive the recommended cuts that we bring forth um with a balanced budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. That is my presentation, so.
We need to show all questions. All right, except brings us to our mission partners for this evening. The first is a rule of human resources staffing report. We get our motion. So.
Sorry.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Alright. Alright, next is the approval of Temple of the School engagement agreement. Um, this is to um uh. Essentially, uh an agreement between us and uh attorney to join the social media um litigation that we had talked about. I think at the end of last year. Um, so if I take the motion here.
So. Sorry.
All in favor?
Hi.
Alright, alright. Thank you. Um, next is approval of a resolution number nine four five, which is the fiscal stabilization plan.
Move. Back it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Right. Alright, next is the approval of the school resource officer.
So, second.
Any discussion, questions?
Yeah, I just wanna, I wanna make sure that um. The question is how, how the uh would be implemented. Um, and I, I see the response was um. Kind of it's included. I don't see that plan particularly put in the, in the, in the I L A. Um, I, what I, what I want to make sure is that, you know, students are being introduced to this program. You know, pretty completely so they understand what's going on here. So that, I mean, we talked about last time that we don't want to do another, the. Chief, that, oh, yeah. Um, the, the one we don't want to do is just have somebody show up in all across our high school walking around one day. And students wondering, you know, what's going on, that kind of thing. So I just want to make sure that we're gonna do it. You know, in some kind of way that it's introduced to the students, you know, they understand what's going on, they understand why we're doing it. You understand that, you know, this is not, you know, this is not. You know, the, the, the be all and all of security. I mean, we've done a whole variety of things in terms of partnering with the entrances. We have security staff. We've had. Counselors and social workers, you know, that is part of the whole big package. And this is another element of that package. And also, you know, particularly it's important that, you know, and it's in here in the, you know, I L A, but. That student, particularly undocumented students, understand that, you know, the officer will not ask them questions about. And if somebody does, they should report that to the principal. And so I just want to make sure that, 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 that the students have a real good solid understanding of what's going on here before.
I also invited Principal Parker here as well. So she's the principal of Foster High School. So I just wanted to make sure that she's on the floor so that she can also address. Her questions and talk, terms of like what she would like to see in terms of co-planning and all of those pieces. So we will, you, you, you have time just to. Answer a few questions or share with your aspirations or feel this program as well. That would be great. Um, Principal Christopher could not be here. He's out. Uh, he's, he couldn't be here today, but he also would be part of that co-. Uh, Principal Parker, he's, um, he's here. Oh, he is here. Are you here? Oh, online, great. He can ask questions about. There you go. Okay, great. So we've got engagement here. Go ahead. So. Yeah. So I want to make sure that they can address them about. So. Who else would like first to say, Brett, do you want, you have anything to share on some of the concerns that Director um Larson raised?
Uh, the general areas, how we build out introducing the, the S R O to the, to the student body and say.
Okay, are you able to hear me now?
Yeah. Yes.
Um, yeah, uh, and we kind of talked about when we were working with the team initially um with the students and the, and the staff members. And we talked about um a number of different strategies. One, like. We would be um introduced as like when we do our six. We would have S R Os there so that students and parents would be uh introduced to them and who they are and how they, what their function is. Also our, our orientations early on. And then we talked about. I'm sorry, because of. I'm sorry. Because of the limited um availability right now with the department, we, we tried to identify. Different events where we could be highlighting those staff who were coming on board and that they would be seen with the community. So. Um, we want to be intentional about how we introduce them to the students.
Okay, thank you. I'm so sorry. We have a technology thing happening here and stuff. We're gonna do it in place. That's okay. I'm so sorry. That's okay. I think we got the bottom of it. It'll probably be. And then we can, we can have um Chief driver share some things too.
Yeah, thank you. And to echo what uh Mr. Christopher said, one of the things that we extreme, we want to be extremely intentional about is um who is in the building. Um, to your point. So we want to have um a school resource officer who is there, who is actually building and bridging relationships with our scholars. Um, it's important for um us to um introduce it to our community um through our current programs that we have, through our current groups. Um, also um having um our uh potential um school resource officer come and connect with families. We really want to um just believe um as a, as a school community that we can uh restore and help bridge. You know, even some of the historical harm that has happened if we have um school resource officers in the building um who are there to uh connect with our youth. Um, we've had about four um external lockdowns um in our school this year. And we also know that um if we had have had a school resource officer in the building. Um, we probably could have been informed sooner, right? Versus hearing um alarms uh or sirens and then going into the lockdown. So. Um, just some of the conversations that we've had informally with our scholars is um, you know, there's been programs in the past uh at Foster that help uh with uh. What's it called? The Bulldog Academy, you know. And so we're just thinking of ways that we can continue to keep our community safe. Um, and so we want to be intentional about who we connect with and that our scholars really know the purpose of the school resource officer um in the building.
Thanks very much. And I think to that point, there's some things I was kind of reading through, reminding myself of some of the words that's in here. There's one point that I'm, I'm curious if we could perhaps update, um if we do it as a, as a. Right now, I've updated and approved at the same time. Um, but under um. Section, Article two, section B, number two, this is the responsibility of people of this department. I think two says maintain responsibility for the selection of the S R O. With the ability to request the assistance and input of the district. Um, and I think I would really like to advocate that it is in collaboration with, not just have a request of. Um, uh, the assistance of the district. I think that um to your point, um, uh, Ms. Parker, having um. Student input, student voice, um staff input, staff voice um uh on the full scope of the selection of that individual, I think is going to be really important. Um, uh, so I guess I, I'm curious if like um. And I know the C W U's revise, if that's just kind of standard language and symbols, symbols used around S R O's and if, if we could change that. Um.
I, I can respond to that. Uh, Eric Draver, Chief of Police for our community. Um, the language was drawn. From prior and other schools documents. Uh, there's no intent to try and monopolize uh that discretion of selection. So we would welcome community input as well as uh scholar in, input and faculty input. Uh, and we can certainly accommodate that. One of the things that uh is. Uh, creates a little bit of a hurdle with that is we already have school resource officers that have been previously selected. That have been waiting for the opportunity to return to the schools. So um. My intent was to allow them to return to the, the assignment that they were previously already chosen for. Uh, and then my thought would be moving forward i- as we have changes, making sure we include. Uh, a- as we just discussed, so changing the language. That being said, we can certainly go through a process of vetting those who have already been chosen for, for that as well. Um, responding to uh the prior questions about, you know, how, how do we. Incorporate the program and get the program back up and running again? I think we're at actually an ideal time for this. We have about four months left of the current school year, as well as was, was mentioned that we have some staffing. Uh, shortcomings right now to be able to just like say tomorrow, we wouldn't be able to just staff it. Um, but I do believe we'll have that flexibility before the end of the year in timing with the new school year. So my thought would be that we use the next four months to do exactly all the suggestions that, that were brought up in socializing it. Pro- providing opportunities to be informed for faculty, students, scholars and families and the community so that. We can educate and bring the program up to a speed at a pace that is comfortable for the students and faculty and though if all of our stakeholders.
Professor, how does that feel for you as far as being able to uh, um, have some sort of influence enough that S R O's have been identified previously?
Yeah, uh, definitely in agreement with that. I think it's important um that our school community feels um. You know, safe with the decision, they're on board and that they have a say. Um, so it feels, it feels like a great plan to me.
So I'm gonna um uh ask that we amend that language to say, um, again, this is, and it might be helpful, I'm not sure if you would mind pulling up, um, Ms. Cor. Um, since uh. Page, page two. Um, so again, right now it currently says maintain responsibility for selection of the S R O with the ability to request assistance and input from the district. I'm going to request that we change that to maintain responsibility for selection of the S R O in collaboration with and um. And in collaboration with an input from the district. Is that.
That, that's agreeable to the city with, with consideration for the fact that we already have the S R Os currently assigned. So uh, we need, we would need to come up for a way to address that particular assignment.
Because they, they do have to be trained to do S R, you know, yes. Staff already in the queue. The language can be changed. We can operate other than the context of that. Now, I don't mean the district might ask, we might have to.
I think as long as the, the student input then still feels.
Safe.
Well, it still feels like it's meaningful and actually getting opportunity for their voice and their input and their feedback to many of, 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 you know, so I don't want it to be just like a. I think words are important, right? The language that we use is important and it's only as good, the language on purpose is implemented, right? So. I, I actually don't like the, the idea that it's just um. Yeah, I don't know. Um. I just didn't like my words there starting to go away. I don't want it to be just a reformative. Use of words, right? So yes, there's a pool of folks that are hired and trained with this for the S R O, but I don't want that to in any way impede or prevent. Everyone feeling that their voice is actually making a difference and who actually shows up at school.
I, I would also like to add that this is a constantly evolving situation and my expectation is. That we hold our officers accountable. And so as we move forward, regardless of whether it's today or eight years from now, as long as this agreement is in place. And as S R Os are chosen and put into the position that similar to discussions that went on earlier. There needs to be accountability in place, in which case that's what part of the agreement is, is having uh regular reporting out. And accountability for the officers in the schools. And if we find that there are instances that would lead to. Not just performance, but you know, some of the discussions that took place earlier regarding equity. Uh, and inclusion and diversity and anything related to why somebody shouldn't be in that position. That we bring it forward and address it and we always have the power to remove somebody from that situation. Um, and address it so that there isn't further harm. So it is a constant assessment of the officers and the department moving forward. Using the agreement and the criteria in the agreement to hold them accountable and, and me, and me accountable.
Yeah, accountable is a very tricky thing.
I, I couldn't, sorry.
I said accountability is a very tricky thing. Um. Yeah. Uh, okay. Another warning thing I had um. Schools, this is under the responsibility of the resource officer. I think this is public question and a, is this really necessary? I feel really uncomfortable about school being a place where young people can be arrested. This is a. Uh, this is the next page. I'm not sure if that's just my ineziness about my school being, uh, like should be in a safe place. But I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure. So I would like to grab that for a second with folks.
What, what page do you?
Uh, right here.
Could I ask for some clarification? So are you talking about just arrest in general or like any arrest or? Cause the only arrest that our officers make in school is a safety decision. So we, we would not be making arrests in school. Let's say one child stole from another. We, we don't arrest on that. We rely on the school and processes uh as well as other deferment programs to address those things. Um, it's only about safety.
Number five says, when available, assist in the arrest of juveniles at the schools as a result of investigations not originated by the S R O.
The, the intent behind that language, which came from the school, is if there needs to be an arrest of a uh student. That the S R O is involved instead of having outside in the officers that have, are, have never had contact with the student before. The intent is that hopefully there's a relationship built up already and a trust of that school resource officer. And get them involved so that we can create a minimal impact on the student.
So I think I can understand and appreciate the intent, but what I don't like is the fact that it can happen in our schools versus. If you know that you unfortunately need to arrest a juvenile. Sure, get the S R O involved, but doesn't need to happen on campus of a school that then I think is, could potentially. Just reinforce uh. Worry, anxiety, stress and all the other things that come as a result from police presence for young people, particularly the young black and brown people. So I guess my.
I absolutely agree.
Specifically on the, at the schools, does that have to be in there? And do we like?
I absolutely agree. If we can avoid it, we, we would not arrest a student at the school.
Yeah, and I, I, as you said earlier. President Hoover, that, words not. It said that the investigation began outside the school. So it took a little PD, said student X. Now, whatever crime it was, have to be arrested at school. You and I would have had any say on that, that we wouldn't even know that's happening. We wouldn't know that that's happening. If, if they shot somebody at the mall and ran lost. At lunch. You and I wouldn't know if they missed class. But the investigation chases student X to the foster. You and I don't get to say they can't arrest. What this language says is. That Paul PD would include the S R O for the safety and sanity of the school. Not necessarily student involved because of relationship. What I'm saying is, if you take that out. It doesn't change whether or not Tepul police are gonna arrest a student on campus. We don't have to be saying, you could delete that whole thing. If a crime was committed in such a way that they have to come get the kid, the student on campus, none of this language is gonna change that. This just says we're expecting our SRO, who's in that same department, to be involved with it because it could ease the tension and change the reaction in the rest of the building. Is that my understanding?
That's that's exactly what the intent was.
So I hear you. But we don't have to say it.
I also, you know, recently had a situation where students from not going to college places who have got into the building, right? There's a lot of our students.
Correct.
And so this is, you know, arrest of juveniles, that means you know, we couldn't have arrested, you know, we don't want somebody who's not supposed to be in the building, wait till we get out of the building.
Well, in that particular situation, and and that's exactly what I'm talking about, if there were a resource officer in the building, we could have had that relationship and the Tepul Police in that situation did detain the intruder who was in the building, the young person who was in the building. But one of the things that we're hoping to do, and and we will always do this because we also have had other situations where, you know, we've done it in a way that upholds, you know, the the privacy, you know, of the scholar whenever possible. And so if we have those relationships with the resource officers, we can help mitigate, you know, some of those situations that could potentially turn or go a different direction without those relationships. And so that's what we're thinking about when we talk about bridging, you know, that partnership with the school resource officers.
So in in my understanding, because I I I think your concerns are legitimate.
Yes.
I just think changing the language won't change the fact that if the police department needs to arrest someone on campus, there's very little you and I can do. This language says the standard operating procedures include the SRO in it. And I think that's that's healthier than not.
I think also, just to add that, I think this is a a special moment. A moment that we're gonna kind of move back because this can really, it can really change, right, the perspectives of different students. The way of what you're doing now is gonna, that's gonna change. That's our listen there. It's gonna change that view. It's gonna start that. And with the adults that are there, you know, that are in place helping to monitor it, that's, I I would expect a professional being there, that's that's important. This, what we're doing here matters, right? For it. So I think that I just want to state that I know this is difficult. You know, for everybody. I see that in your head, you know, for young people, for everyone that's here, right? But it's important. This has to happen to change, right? And that that stretch is gonna be hard. And I get that. And I'm hoping, I know we have the right people in place that are gonna monitor it and make sure that it's done well. Because at the end of the day, it's our students.
Do you want to add anything, Alex, in terms of your feeling about this or what you hear from your peers?
Well, I would add, I would feel like, yeah, it would be a good idea, like, even connecting up this new advisory group to like to have students have some input on the on the, like, what was it, so that the SROs that are already like in line, now have already have been trained, I think. That will definitely help ease the SRO into our schools.
Thank you.
I love that you have our agenda, so I'm glad you all figured it out. Great. I have another one, sorry. Going down to the next page, never nominee. Silly thing, but it's been designed to increase student understanding and respect for law enforcement. I think my curiosity is, can we acknowledge that respect is mutual and not just a one-way or one-sided thing? Because the reality is like, the officers, the SRO that's in the building, everybody who's in the building, they should be showing every single respect, right? Not just for a little bit over pretending it, right? Which was, that's not as I can attest, but so again, I think I would advocate for even just adding some language to emphasize that, because where I, again, the last thing I want is there'd be an expectation of respect simply because of the uniform.
This is another segment that was written by the school, not by the police department. So I'm happy to modify however the board feels fit.
Do you have an idea what you want to say?
I don't know this one.
Let me help. Maybe what would strive to increase mutual understanding and respect between law enforcement and student interactions and influence, et cetera, et cetera. Somebody write it down.
Most of it, they are pretty soon, I've said, mutual, between student and law enforcement. The rest can stay the same.
I'm gonna go back to one thought before and then my last word, but then again. Yeah. So I think one of the challenges with, I think what I follow is, was something to share, lost time to the conglomeration, you know, as we just discussed earlier, we've got our own issues internally with accountability with the staff as well as with student discipline. Right? There are biases that come in student discipline. And so we don't even have within the district enough awareness and action behind addressing those things. And I, yeah, it 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 just makes me really concerned about the potential for adding just another entity that ultimately is there to protect and police behavior. And we, like, individual, I can't speak to interpersonal, you know, dynamics of individuals' journey on understanding racism, but I can't speak to institutional structural racism that's inherent, right, in policing. And I just worry about the continued perpetuation of anti-blackness in discipline. So it's all connected, right? So I think I'm just, I just need to say that a lot. We've got internal work to do which I think then makes me nervous to have an external entity that also has its own challenges internally to navigate compiling, you know, compounding on the things that we already have to work on. Last wording question. So this is the la, not the last page. Versus someone help information, E, letter E. Around the dress. So it says dress down, that's great, gold shirt. Additionally, let's see, something, okay, two questions around this. It says, when there is need for a SRO to wear full uniform, can you give me some ideas about when it might be necessary for the SRO to be in uniform?
If they're expected to potentially fill in for a patrol shift during the day and or certain trainings, representation at specific functions, there there's need at times for a uniform. It should be a rarity. So an officer shouldn't just choose of his own accord, in this case, a a school resource officer. I think I'll wear a uniform today. No, the expectation will be that we are using this modified dress that is less intimidating, less formal up until there's a need not to. And so it it's it's dynamic, but it it'll be a rarity.
So the needs sound mostly external and not like a need related to something that's happening in the building. So I guess maybe my ask would be is if they're gonna have an office, which is outlined here, right, some place for them to be in school, could they not change in there when they needed to or report, like, go change somewhere else so that they're not on campus in their uniform? Because that, I think, is one of the most consistent things that I saw of feedback. Even for people that wanted the SRO to be back in the buildings, they did not wear the uniform. And so I think I'm just asking, like, is there a way that we can ensure that that doesn't happen? And, you know, again, figuring out some creative ways to either, whether they got a space or they take an extra five minutes to go somewhere and to change into their uniform.
We will strive, but I I can't just say blanketly, we we would not be in the school and not be in uniform. I, situations would come up and I hate for to violate an agreement that I think that at some point or another, we would end up inadvertently violating. So I I think that's something that we can certainly work on to meet that concern, especially over the next couple of months as we start socializing the idea and working with students, faculty, stakeholders on trying to address that specific issue. I think we have an opportunity to come up with what would meet that need.
Okay. And then lastly, about the exposure of firearms, that was again another I think big piece of feedback. Again, like, why does it need to be exposed? Why can't it just be a concealed weapon at all times? People know that they're gonna have it, so why does it have to be visible?
I I could give several explanations. The the most prominent one is access to the firearm in need. If there should happen to be a need for an officer to draw his firearm, anything that impedes that just just creates more risk for everybody involved. To the contrary of that argument, if you know it's there, what would become?
There's the difference, if you see it.
Well, we had twenty plus years prior to these discussions where it it was not an issue. And I I have extreme concern on anything that's going to limit the primary target, which will be the officer.
Respectfully, it probably wasn't an issue. It just wasn't named.
But I also, if I can, I have mad respect for where you're coming from. But I also know that I'm from a whole bunch of folks that got trauma with law enforcement, documented. And I did. But at the same time, I expect the police to show up and be police. I expect the firemen to show up and be fire. I don't wanna water it down so much that they're not that. Truth of the matter is, if I got, if I have trauma around that, understanding that and accommodating it at a reasonable fashion, but the other part is, I gotta go get treatment. Because even if I got trauma around police presence, when I leave Foster and go to the bus stop, cop is in a car, he's in a uniform, she's in a uniform. That doesn't change my trauma. When I go to Walgreens, I'm a black man. I got issued with that. But at the same time, when I need police, I need them to show up as police. So even though I have some true therapy, some trauma that needs therapy and attention, there's a a balance of of that. I still think, yes, I get it. They should be dressed down. I get it. There there's a there should be a softer presence because what we're trying to accomplish is establishing a healthier relationship with law enforcement with school while at the same time being a deterrent because school is often a threat. That's a balance that needs to be respected, not watered down to where the SRO can't do what he or she needs to do effectively. But I also get it. There are many folk in our buildings who have some issue, but the truth of the matter is, that's not gonna change that issue. That issue needs to be addressed this way. That that's not real work when that student walks out the building. That's not real work. As a black man driving down the city, that's just not real work. So we've got to prepare them and we can do our part to heal that. Not only the officer's presence, we should have them offer opportunities to engage. But at the same time, you can't, you can't. We're not gonna be able to address all of that stuff. All of, some of that stuff needs therapy. And we're not gonna be able to, why? So if we if we find ourselves chasing that, we'll find ourselves having a watered down version of what we really wanted to build at their expense.
One of the other things that I want to add is, so currently during our games, right, we do have uniformed police officers at our games. And they're there, they're helping to monitor. So I'm reflecting back on the situation when we had the intruders who came into the building, multiple of them. Not, and I'm all for, you know, dressing down, but I think about that incident where it was multiple people involved and no one knew who security was, who would have been law enforcement at that time. We had scholars who, other scholars who got involved. That could have turned extremely bad, right? Had there been a resource officer in the building or, you know, anyone just coming trying to de-escalate the situation. I think to your point, Mr. Proctor, that there is still a certain level of awareness with in the instance that a a police officer is in uniform. As a black woman, I echo exactly what you just said, and I and I've shared this before. I think it's it's important, you know, I know we're in the times that we're in, but right now we need to roll this out with fidelity, but we also need to be aware that there are things happening outside in the community. And we have, you know, all of our scholars in the building who are predominantly students of color. And they are looking to have an extra layer of security. Me as the leader of that school, I'm, I, we have to have bridge the relationships, and I keep using that term because that's what it is. We have to have a partnership with the police because when our scholars go out into the into the community and things are happening as they are every day, we need to know that our officers know who our students are and vice versa. And so I believe, you know, through this process, that we will help to reduce some of the things that are happening and and be able to keep a closer pulse on what's going on.
I guess all I'm saying is, we we don't wanna go too far down the wrong road either way. There's a balance that I don't even delegate. It's just a healthy balance. Dressing down, but I don't, I don't think it's wise to, to let the police be the focus. They're trained to be SROs. They know they're in the school building. And and we can hold them accountable and be a part of their awareness. I just, we have to be careful. We have to be careful making decisions based on the outlier. Yeah. Because if a shooter came to the building, I don't want the cop looking for it to go. But I also don't want the cop thinking, this is a dark practice. Our students are students, they're scholars. Right? So I get it. I get that.
Relationships are key.
Their relationships are key, but they're trained, they should be trained in that. I'm not training, actually, I'm trying, but that's a different conversation. But I, so I understand the moment. But if we over legislate, we may weaken what we're trying to accomplish. When I, when I call from fire department, I need that big red truck. I'm wondering why they ain't got the spotted dog. I want, that's what I want. I don't want the cops shooting their firemen and show up and anything. And walk, I need that whole thing. So I get it, and I do, I feel it, and I'm, I'm I've experienced the thing we're trying to avoid, but at the same time, yeah, I I mean, chief, PG. Well, I'm just, I'm drawn against, but I think, I think that is accommodated in the new trial and the language and the understanding, but I did, I think that's crazy. That's my.
About two official amendments. I'm fine with. Um and finally, leaving that as is, and see how things go, and then revisit it later on. Yeah, um so any other thoughts, questions, suggestions?
Is there anything else, Principal, that, that you can think of, or anything that we're not seeing that, that would, that is in this draft? And also, Gee kind of asking you both, is there something, cause you know, you guys are the professionals, right? And we're, we're just up here doing our best to help you, support you guys.
I think it's already been named, um and I think it's there, I think one of the things that's extremely important is um that our team um has an opportunity, our, our team, our scholars um and our staff have an opportunity to vet, um whoever is already um been selected for those positions.
I think the other things is the planning.
Yes.
The planning, the co-planning here till June to make sure we get all the things that you raised right from the beginning. Cause how it launches is gonna be very important.
Absolutely.
Cause you're reintroducing something that is um, that we have to make sure is done well. And I also think we need to make sure we have a check-in to progress monitor how things are going, right? I think we have to have that as well, and I mean, from a more broader district point of just a check-in along the way. So we can design that in the planning phase together, and one of those check-ins will be.
Yeah, I think it's, they're doing a standard, we're building this on top of, so the other thing is, you know, we, a number of years ago had a program to, make sure the students, you know, when you see something, say something. And that, that's been, there's been several incidents that have been prevented over the years. And so, I mean, we're all in this together, working together.
I would say many of the incidences we've had this year has been given because of a family member. I will say our director of communications who sent out a letter regarding, you know, resources, advocating for that. Our principals, and both principals and all our principals sharing information as well. Um but mostly the incidents were student-reported or parent-reported, and even that's what's, that's what got us to the place where things weren't worse than they could have been, to be honest. And I also wanna thank staff responsiveness, uh you can't always control what happens, but we can control how we respond, and they've been amazing, every step of their way, so I, I wanna make sure to give clues to everybody, up to the staff and students and, and the leaders, um and the safety officers that we have in our buildings, tree officers in our building too.
Okay, if, if I could just add in supplement here. This is simply a base for us to start from. I fully expect staff, students, families to continue to challenge and evolve this process with us. I have absolute faith in the students being able to provide the feedback that we need to give them the best program that is going to be there for them and meet their needs. Um and it's going to change, and it's gonna take this board, it's gonna take the members of the police department that are performing that function. Most importantly, it's gonna take students, fa- faculty and family providing feedback to tell us exactly how to direct this program moving forward, so that it can meet all of the needs of the students as they present them. And, and I look forward to working with the students so that we can do exactly that and give you what you need.
Thank you, I, I think it's important, um, that if, if I look at this, I want you to know that I'm expecting, even though you have one or two, three people trained, that the school gets, to vet onboard or refuse that cabinet. That's the expectation. Cause if you, we can't get to effective if, if they meet, and, and it ain't, it ain't matter. But I think, this is for me, it's a matter of safety, but this is something the students have been talking about for a while. And I wanna be able to deliver in a way that is wise, true, practical, and give them voice. So I only, even if we approve it, I don't want them to not be a part of the onboard, cause then that's, that's not listening to what they said. So that, that's my expectation, and uh, uh, if this, if this passes, and, I will be, eyes on, eyes on for it, I'm gonna hear it. I just, I just wanna, I don't know how the hope's gonna go, but I wanna be clear. Uh and if we can't do that, tell me now, cause you need to modify.
Right, so um we're looking to approve this with two amendments to um letter B, number two, as it relates to the uh in- input and liberation with the SRO, um as well as um, uh letter C, number nine, um we're changing that to improve mutual respect uh and understanding. All right, all in favor of approval? All right, it stands approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both, and thank you, Brian, as well, the name, uh, all right, next, uh and last is the approval of the overnight travel. Uh to the FCC LA State Nutrition Conference.
Second.
Questions?
I saw this, when I got the email, by concern, I, I was supportive. But I was at the last meeting, we said not to approve them, so of course that, cause that worked, I don't wanna get in trouble to do.
Yeah, one of the um, uh, one of the goals is to make sure that um, we, we don't travel, talk about adult travel, and we're trying to keep our focus on kids and supporting them, and they make a, they advance to something, so um, I believe this is something that we believe is important to our values, so um, but I will say, we are not approving adult travel unless it's paid for from an outside institution, so.
I guess, I mean, it says budget, okay, I'm kinda, I mean, of course I'm a student, um, trips and programs is, included in current budget, no additional budget required, the problem is that if, our current budget, our current budget broke, big time, so I just don't want to have a crash, be able to be used.
Honestly, every time, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, uh this is a CTSO, it's a career and technical student organization, the FCC LA. Um this is being paid for by CTE money, not VEA. And our CTE funding is in very good shape, so this should not impact the uh, the deficit that we're currently experiencing.
We just had a report that our CTE money was way over.
It's been fixed.
So as a part of our, I'll see, come out there, as a part of our increased growth of enrollments, CTE funding has actually increased, that is something that just came through uh this week. Uh so it's not reflected on this projection.
Oh, okay.
So like I said, I'm still working through the projections, and enrollment numbers as a result of CTE have caused some increases in revenues, so there is actually funding available um in the CTE program. And you don't see it on the revenue side, because it's buried in that apportionment oh one number. Uh and that's the way apportionment comes in, but we have to dig through the apportionment schedule, and so find the actual CTE funding for that.
Okay, so the cost of six fifty for each student. There's seven, it's nine, and we, I'm just, we're way out some money, and CTE money's over. Yes, I said, I guarantee it.
Okay, any additional questions? All right, we should raise those questions every time.
You don't skip it.
Yeah, I'm the, for sure, all in favor? All right, what is approved? Thank you, all right, so we are now to our final option, your final comments. Um so if you are hearing this online, still, you're like, um, again, um, I'd say that we have one in-person public comment, um so we'll start uh there, um so state per word.
I have two comments, I hope I'm allowed to. One, um and, and I asked the chief, you're gonna stick around so you can talk with him about it, but I see nothing in the language that you just passed, and you're gonna change things in the future, so for your consideration, because I do this for a living, um putting um body-worn cameras on officers for the sheriff's department. There's no language in there saying whether they can or cannot use that, and you might wanna consider that. Uh have it defined as to what the school district cares about. My second comment is, I would love either the next meeting or, uh if you know, today, to understand the process for applicants for District Two. And that's my comment, thank you.
If, if I could comment on the cameras, our policy only allows, or our policy mandates the wearing of the cameras for uniform. This would not be uniform, however, uh we can find a way to make sure that the uh cameras uh are on the officers. Um they would not, they don't record twenty-four-seven, they only record when activated. Um but there are certain policies that would dictate when they have to activate them. Um and we can work through that to make sure that uh we are incorporating it and providing that added level of accountability.
Yeah, yeah, maybe, it gets.
You got no items, man, where are we supposed to be, you know, taking the key?
You have to check the, uh, per the.
I think that's a great conversation, or you know, something to dive into, if you can call it, implementation in the next phase, looks like.
Absolutely.
I think there's some national organizations that might have findings on this, I'm curious.
We'll, we'll explore.
That'd be great, yeah, that'd be perfect. All right, question for the board, uh actually, any other comment online? Okay, so we were going to, at this time, go into a closed session, um however, it is nine twenty-one, uh it's late. Um so I wanted to, I guess, ask the board, we, we have two options here, um is um, uh what, what we were gonna discuss in closed session is timed, so I didn't wanna put it off. Um so we could continue on with that plan right now, um or we could try and schedule a, a special meeting, uh special close meeting um within the next week, um but either one's gonna be asking more or.
I'm here, here, where you go, I'm here for me.
I agree, I mean, it's have another special meeting, why not, we're, some time.
All right, all right, so that means we are going into closed session, so we are going to request that everyone, um, head out, thank you so very much for being here, um I don't know if this is for recording, we have to say how long. We don't actually adjourn. Right, okay, then this, that'll be great, all right, so we'll officially adjourn this meeting.